You can see the biggest difference between twenty-three and twenty-four is the Public Works Building. That was approximately a twelve million dollar decrease in the capital spend. Uh, then there was an additional about one and a half million still to go this year. So that's it. So it dropped down about twelve and then added back into one and a half million. So that's, that's really the large decrease uh in between the two budget and the proposed numbers there. Everything else by and large is fairly similar uh year over year. Uh, just a couple of housekeeping items as we've done in the past. Uh, when we're going through the budget sheets, um unless otherwise noted, uh personnel costs are up um or down, depending on staffing levels, also union contracts and the city's uh non-union personnel compensation policy. Uh, IMRF this year is down another two percent uh due to the good investment year. We are expecting that number to go up uh this next fiscal year though into twenty-five uh based upon the market returns, as well as the city's ERI rate is going to be added in, starting with next calendar year. So we do expect that number to go up, uh but we'll take it for now. And then also each sheet kind of has a reason uh for a significant increase or decrease. It's not an exhaustive list. For example, if something goes up fifty or, or a hundred dollars, that's not really material. Um, so we don't list every single change. We only list the, kind of the, the highlights of the bigger things that might be of, of note. I want to draw your attention to as we're going through. In the expanded level items, there were five recommended ones. Uh, in administration, we have the Azure cloud migration. Uh, community development, we have the building administrator position. Police department, the software package. Public works administration, public works management analyst. And then in the tourism fund, the dialer ride driver going from part-time to full-time. As we're going through the general fund, uh the administration tab is an aggregation of the departments that you see there. The manager's office, the clerk's office, legal, HR, IT and marketing are all under the city administration tab. Community development, there's the operations and then building maintenance, which is the cleaning crew and the commodities, you know, the toilet paper, soap, things of that nature. Uh, finance, police department, uh board of fire and police, and then the three divisions in the general fund related to public works, being the administration, streets and vehicle maintenance. So the general fund summary, which can be found on page thirty-eight uh behind the general fund summary tab. The general fund as presented for fiscal year twenty-three, which is still the current year that we're in, is expected to end the year with a surp- surplus of just under six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, so a pretty good year, uh all things considered. And then as presented, uh the fiscal year twenty-two-four budget has a, uh, expected surplus of ninety-three thousand and five dollars as presented this evening. Uh, going to the summary of general fund revenues. Uh, the revenues themselves for the general fund can be found on page thirty-six of the document. Uh, thirty-six and thirty-seven technically, but beginning on page thirty-six. Uh, the increase in the taxes line item is driven largely by property tax, income tax and sales tax. Uh, there was a slight decrease just based on the per, uh, per capita distribution from the state. The state lowered their estimate for this upcoming fiscal year a little bit. But property tax, income tax and sales tax are all expected to be up based upon uh the trends and the IML projections. Uh, license and permits is down a little bit due to right-of-way fees. Remember last year, um, there were quite a bit of new right-of-way fees in there. After going through and negotiating with the vendors, uh some of the vendors were covered under existing agreements. Um, so we're kind of right sizing that number now going into year two. And then vehicle stickers, uh based on the multi-year actuals coming out of the pandemic, we feel a little bit better about that number going forward. Uh, the decrease in intergovernmental funds, uh is the elimination of the ARPA funding. Uh, we knew that was a one-time revenue going into it, so the ARPA money coming out, the nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars coming out this year was known and expected, uh which is also why last year's budget had such a large increase because we didn't want to count on that going forward, knowing it wasn't gonna be there.
Uh, I mean to take a, take note, Alderman Woods is in the house. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the decrease in the investment line item uh is largely driven by the interest for IPBC. That's our healthcare pool. Uh, that is a professionally managed pool, but just with the way the market's been the last year, we're expecting that they're gonna have a similar fate that, uh, pretty much all other investments have had over the last year or so. Uh, there's just the written prose of what I just said. Summary of expenses.
Mayor, go ahead.
Before you get off the revenues, uh, under bulletproof vests, so we put money in for that. I take it we replace so many per year, or how long do these things last?
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I would have to defer to, uh, the police chief on how long they last. Uh, but the vests themselves are budgeted for out of the police operating equipment in the police department. The money that's showing up here uh on page thirty-six with a bulletproof vest, that's a reimbursement that we get from, I believe it's Department of Justice for purchasing those vests. Um, but I would have to defer, like I said, to the chief for a little more information on life cycle and things of that nature.
Go ahead. So I'm thinking twenty-two hundred's not enough to replace all the vests we need each year, right?
I'd have to defer to, uh, the Chief Zito on that one.
Go ahead, Chief.
So the life cycle is five years on the replacement. Um, and Brad can correct me, but I think the twenty-two hundred is the reimbursement we're getting towards the purchase of the vests. That's not the actual cost of the vests.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
So if they're only five years, basically what are we replacing? Eight, nine per year?
Uh.
Seven.
Generally, we're on that schedule this year with the turnover, uh, new hires. We've just ordered, I believe it was fourteen, uh, that we have ordered and it should be delivered shortly.
And we're all set, we're all good in the budget, take care of that? I just wanna make sure we have enough, make sure that's handled.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Moving on to the general fund, uh, summary of expenses. Uh, you'll see personnel is up around a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. Uh, a quick note on that, uh, is if, just for argument's sake, if you took both of the expanded level items out of the general fund budget, it would actually show a decrease of approximately sixty thousand uh in the personnel line items, so. Um, it's just, I guess, if you say status quo budget, actually shows a decrease of sixty thousand in personnel. With the two expanded level items, it does go up that hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. Uh, contractual items is largely driven by, um, contractual increases in the TraxGuard contract and the ACDC dispatch contract, as well as the two expanded level items being the Azure, uh, cloud migration and the PD software. Increase in commodities is largely, it's spread out over, uh, all the departments, but largely due to a rising fuel costs.
Question? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Looking at, um, call, account number, line item forty-two zero six one, health insurance. Why was that at zero?
What page are you on?
I'm on forty-one. Am I, maybe a page ahead, too?
Wait, you jump ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Few pages ahead. Okay, I'll wait. Yeah.
You're talking about the first column, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Continue, Director.
Sure. Alright, so moving into, uh, the administration budget, and we'll get Alderman Messina's question in, in one moment. Administration budget, uh, the increase in personnel, uh, is largely related to the GIS specialists returning to full-time status from part-time status. Uh, increase in contractual due to IT, the expanded level item, which we'll get to in a moment as well. So that's the high-level, uh, summary on admin. Get into, this is the breakdown of the administration department, um, in general. Um, you see the increase in the HR division, the third one down, is related largely to, uh, the property casualty and workers' comp coverage. Um, again, not to beat a dead horse, uh, but IT includes the expanded level item, uh, which is offset, uh, by a reduction in professional services, which we've been able to realize with the new employee that we have in the IT division as well. So there has been, um, a decrease of pro services, uh, due to that hire. And then the marketing is up, uh, largely due to costs related to the city's newsletter. Uh, and just so we're clear, that's all phases of the newsletter. The postal service has seen an increase in postage, paper costs more and the design costs more. So all three phases of the newsletter are showing an increase, uh, going forward in this year's budget. Um, now getting to Alderman Messina's question on page forty-one of the budget.
Yeah.
Um, the health insurance line. In twenty-twenty-one, uh, health insurance was budgeted out of central services and not the departments. And so that's just kind of the last year of that, that trailing, uh, change that we did. So next year, that will be pulled up. So it just, it was budgeted out of a different cost center back in twenty-twenty-one. We did have healthcare back then.
So just shuffled out of a different, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just shuffled out of a different line. It wasn't an actual zero, it's, it was out in another fund?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Go ahead.
On page forty-one, not a huge number, but recording fees, it looks like it was, it's been a real low number and projected four-twenty, or is like nine-thousand forty-nine? How come the big increase in that?
Yeah, that's, uh, so there's two different facets to the recording fees. There's the recording with the DuPage County, and then there's recording of the new ordinances with the codifier. So I think over seven thousand dollars worth of that nine thousand dollars was the recordation of the new UDO with the codifier and updating the city's website to reflect, uh, the new UDO.
Good. Uh, well, I got a question. So going back to the market and so we've got a twenty-five percent increase, right? So are we gonna be going out for more bidding? Uh, maybe that's directed to, uh, the, go ahead.
Yeah, I had, uh, I think I put something out a couple of weeks ago that, that was coming up due. Um, I don't believe this year.
So I'd defer to Ms. Silva if we could, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, the next printing contract is due April the twenty-fourth, so we intend on going to bid, I'm sorry, April two thousand twenty-four. So we intend on going out to bid in January two thousand twenty-four.
Good. So we're not gonna do it anytime sooner, we're gonna wait till next year?
Actually, we'd had to renew the contract sooner. Um, it had already expired during the transition of my, um, taking on the new role.
Okay. And also we're gonna go locally, right? We're gonna get some bids out to local companies, correct?
That's my goal.
Okay.
Beijing.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, renew a conversation we had and I didn't see the green sheet in there for it. So I created my own, with the liberty of creating my own green sheet for the, uh, assistant city manager position that we talked about. I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but I would think budget time is the right time to talk about the employees since all the other new employees are in here. So I.
Right under gasoline and commodities.
I, I put some numbers together based on conversations that we had and looking at other communities and what those costs would be. And, uh, came up with a total salary with insurance in FICA and IMRF using the same percentages we use. On the other employees, and that came up to a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. If this time I would like to add that into the budget.
I have a question. Would that put us in a deficit budget if we do that? Director Wilson? Go ahead.
Based upon the numbers as presented, heading one-fifty-nine, just based purely on mathematics, would put it in a negative yes.
Thank you.
It's not to say that it couldn't be resolved, but just in a vacuum.
Okay.
Right, it's just a, just a follow-up. As always, when we add something, we resolve the issue, the budget's already presented. Oh, not what you kind of fluffing it's like.
Line item for a whole punch for you next time?
Okay, okay. Director Wilson, continue please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so we're getting to, um, I guess now maybe the second green sheet of the night, Alderman Woods' green sheet. Um, on page forty-five, uh, the Azure cloud migration. Uh, you may recall, uh, when we were talking about the, um, IT infrastructure, uh, analysis that we were having done, that we would likely be migrating to the cloud. Uh, Mr. Stenson has done a great deal of work researching this and, um, again, this is a summary of what he came up. There's a little more information on page forty-five, uh, but if there's any, uh, detailed questions on this particular sheet, I would have to defer to Director Stenson for any, any questions.
Alderman Jacob?
A couple of questions on this, uh, and I mean, maybe you or Mr. Murmice could answer the question, but I don't know if Mr. Stenson could, who wasn't here, but in the past, I mean, our former IT director highly recommended having our internal servers and at that time we talked about it and he said that would be the best thing to do, is have everything internally and it's now in the police room downstairs. So what, I, I guess what compelling event has changed that now we need to go to the cloud?
Go ahead.
Well, a couple of things. Uh, most recently, we had a, uh, failure of our power system that served the computer, uh, server room. Um, so from a physical standpoint, when we migrate to the cloud, we have multiple redundant, uh, failover, uh, data centers. So not only would we have the data center here in the Midwest, but in the government Azure cloud, that's replicated, uh, to three data centers throughout the United States. Secondly, we, I'm sorry, we're also, uh, increasing our data storage, more specifically our in-car video and body worn cameras. We're increasing our data storage about ten terabytes a year. So we're currently, uh, almost maxed, uh, just on that partition particularly. Uh, and in the short term, we're gonna have to upgrade that server, uh, just to store, uh, in-car video and body worn camera data.
Go ahead.
So not sure if you would have the answer to this, but I, I guess in the past, was it more, um, more municipalities did they? Cause I know our former IT director highly recommended we do the in-house stuff. I mean, was that something? Just cause the data storage and stuff now was, people are going, migrating to the cloud versus actual having all these file servers?
Sh- and more specifically is just that disaster recovery, uh, and data redundancy. Uh, for instance, if, if we had some type of flood or fire or some type of, uh, failure in that server room, uh, the only redundancy we have is a backup to the cloud, uh, which the, the downtime to restore that versus having cloud services with, with Azure, uh, would take a longer period of time.
Follow-up.
Yeah, just not being an IT expert, but with the stuff migrating to the cloud, do, do we get rid of a lot of that equipment down there? Or do we still keep that equipment and still use it?
So, yeah, so we would minimize the use of that equipment, so we would migrate our ERP services, which is our Tyler Munis. Um, our file services, which is our day-to-day file access for all the departments, and that would all be migrated to the cloud.
And as things down there break down, would we still need to replace them then? Or at that point, if something breaks down there, we wouldn't have to replace whatever's down there?
So we still have network services, so we still have core network, uh, switches and, and routers that we still have to maintain in that room, which then, uh, creates a data access on our local area network and our wide area network and access to the internet, access to, uh, Office three-sixty-five in the cloud as well. So we still will have to maintain a data center, uh, but minimize the use of on-premise servers.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, did you have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have followed. So I called Brad and asked about, um, why we're switching from one to the other. And he told me a couple of things, so it's gonna cost us an extra thirty-seven thousand, but if we, because we have other items with Microsoft or something, there's discounts or something, uh, can you elaborate on that though? I'm not, I'm not a computer guy, so I'm just.
Sure. So we have a current licensing structured plan with Microsoft with our Office three-sixty-five and our on-premise, uh, servers and desktops. So with Microsoft Azure, uh, we would then have a hybrid licensing model, which then would get a reduction, uh, in those licensing fees.
Is that incorporated in the budget already or? No, it, it'll be a savings, so we don't know what that number is either.
Uh, that's, that's probably more to the point is we're not sure what that number's going to be. Cause Microsoft, I believe, wouldn't give Mr. Stenson actual numbers until we actually did something. So we know it's going to be some savings, we're just not sure what that number, uh, in totality is gonna be.
Okay, I just.
Alderman Messina?
A couple of questions. Um, security review, are we doing that?
Yeah, so we're in process of our IT assessment, uh, that's ongoing and that should be completed, uh, by probably second or third quarter.
Will we be able to see the results of that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we hold at the municipal level any type of standard like state ramp? Like, or obviously we're not gonna meet or ask for the standard of fed ramp, but like are at least gonna, is there a standard at the municipal level? I don't work with municipal entities, but.
Yeah, so you, uh, you automatically procure the services directly. So we currently have Microsoft, uh, services in the form of Office three-sixty-five.
Running on Azure.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And then also our hybrid active directory. So we currently do have some services already, uh, purchased. Uh, the previous IT director migrated from an on-prem exchange server to Office three-sixty-five. So we're currently using.
So do we need a, sorry, do we need a security review if, if we already have some, already services running on Azure?
So that's also part of Azure's package is they have SIM and SOAR and, and security audits already built into the service.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll receive daily logs of, of our, our, our build out and our services.
I'm guessing this cost doesn't include any of the migration service costs?
Correct. So there will be some migration service costs from Tyler Munis, um, uh, once we approve, if we approve, uh, and then start the project.
And then, final question, obviously, I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of entities move to the cloud, right? And upfront, it looks really attractive, right? Get rid of the physical hardware, the servers, it's great. ROI tends to take a while and then you get to a point where there's renewals, right? Do we have in our agreement anything that caps a year-over-year renewal so that, let's say it's a hundred thousand one year that we're not gonna expect to pay twenty-five percent increases? Like, do we have that? Are we able to go into that kind of multi-year contract?
Yeah, so their business model is, is, you know, one, three and five year. So if you engage in a three-year contract, you'll see a, a reduction of the sixty percent savings, uh, versus a one-year or a month a month. So you can go month a month, a year, three years or five years.
Okay, one more question.
Go ahead.
Could we, I don't know how it, again, at the state, I know at the federal level, if it's not appropriated, we can't do multi-year. But here, would they just be option years then? Is that how we do it, or could we actually execute on a contract, multi-year contract at the municipal level?
Sure.
We could, okay.
That's correct.
Even if it's, we'd have to appropriate the money now though, in the budget to cover the three years?
Yep.
Yeah.
No, no.
Mayor?
Like legally, meaning like this, Congress, right? We can't give, Congress can't, an entity in the federal government can't say, I'll do three years when Congress passes a budget every year, right? You don't know if you're gonna get the money. So every deal is a one-year deal. Here at the state or local level, that's, I guess I'm asking Brad, um, either one of you, like, if the money's, do we have to appropriate the money now for all three years?
No, we, we would do the contract with the presumption that we would fund it. And for some reason, the council decides not to fund it, um.
So it's an option year?
Then we, then we would be able to, as a municipality, be able to exercise our right of not appropriation right to the contract, to try and extract ourselves from the contract. We would obviously work with, uh, yeah, with, uh, Von Dixon to, to get that, but.
So is it an option year or are we executing on a three-year, five-year deal?
Practically would be three ones.
Okay.
Or five ones, just like, uh, similar to the audit contract. It's a five-year pricing quotation. It's, it's a series of one-year agreements at that point.
I just wanna make sure that we don't get hosed on the year-over-year increases, right? That's my biggest concern. So I'd rather go, if the rest of the council agrees, commit to a three-year, a five-year deal, but knowing that we, we stay flat or under at least five percent at the highest, right? So would love to see it, hopefully the rest of you guys would as well. But I just, I just have seen some of these migrations to the cloud get really crazy with year-over-year renewals and then it ends up becoming more expensive than just keeping it on-premise, so. And then the migration and service costs is something that, of course, I'd like to see. Um, that's all the questions I have.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so in what Alderman Messina was saying, so this is a one-year, this is a one-year contract, this fee?
Correct.
Okay, but we don't know what it would be next year? As of right now, we're only signing a one, planning on signing a one-year?
And then if we commit to a two or a three-year, you'll see a reduction in costs. So if you commit, so it's a committal, so if you commit to a two or a three-year, um, upfront, you'll see a reduced, uh, cost as well.
Go ahead.
Do we know what that cost is? I mean, would you happen to know the figures for like the two and three year?
So the, the current estimated cost would be about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year minus our offsets. Our offset would then bring it down and, and to about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Cause we're currently paying costs for our current, uh, on-prem infrastructure and maintenance and licensing fees. Uh, so that would transfer obviously to the cloud.
Director Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, he's saying, you know what the cost would be if we did a three-year deal instead of one-twenty-five?
That, I would have to, uh, contract with Microsoft, sorry. I didn't understand your question.
Mayor, did you have questions?
Yep. So a quick follow-up. So let's say you ask for the three-year and the five-year. Now, let's say the three-year is at a hundred thousand. But at the end of the first year, we choose to opt out, they're gonna want the other twenty-five thousand from us, I would imagine, right? They're not just gonna say, I don't know, you still get the hundred thousand, right?
Correct. There is a penalty, um, if you do commit to a one, two or three year and then you opt out.
Right, they're gonna want their, what their initial rate was. That's what I figured.
Alderman Woods?
So the, the, uh, IT guy, architecture, um, engineer that we hired to review our whole system, software, hardware, the whole nine yards, has he, uh, chanked in on the return on investment here? Or what is the better way to do this than thinking of everything?
Not.
The just, the storage portion?
Yeah, we haven't committed our, uh, finalized that, uh, that document yet, so that's still in process.
When, when, when is that due? Is that shortly?
Yeah, either second or third quarter. Yep.
So it'll be a while. Do we need to execute this before we see that?
That's, um, that's a good question. Um, we're currently on-prem, so our current, uh, on-prem infrastructure is functioning. Uh, but this is a projected project, uh, to upgrade in the future.
I, I guess, pardon me, would like to, uh, get that guy to weigh in on what we're doing since we're paying him to review the whole system and go over everything, just to get his input. Seems like a lost opportunity if we execute this. Not saying it's not the right thing, just, this isn't my specialty, so.
Alderman Messina?
I mean, could we, do we still have time to change what's in the agreement with him? Like, I would be shocked. I would bet my little pedley, two-week paycheck up here, uh, that he's not gonna recommend we move to the cloud. I think that's a given, right? But could we steer some of the, that, some of that SOW with, that maybe we have with him? Where we could say, can you give us recommendations on where we'd get, what we should migrate first, right? Like, the, the things that, like, we, I asked him about migration costs. Some stuff is gonna cost a lot of money to migrate, right? We may wanna do that in phases and some stuff will be pretty easy. Can maybe we, do you know if we have that ability? He seemed pretty flexible where he can give us direction on what would make the most sense? If we did it in phases as opposed to a one, one-time shot?
Yeah, I actually have a meeting with, uh, the consultant next week, so, uh, that'll be, uh, some of the lighted questioning that we'll discuss.
Mayor?
So for the sake of, so we, we know we've hired the guy. If we put this in the budget today, it's, we are gonna wait and get everything all at once, so then we can make a decision if we're moving forward. It's not like we pass this tonight and then final budget. And just because it goes in the budget doesn't mean it automatically gets done, right? We're gonna wait and get that information?
That was my question.
Right.
To get the CBA.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say that, to the mayor's point, I think we, we're all expecting there to be some form of migration to a cloud service. And so instead of coming back to the council after getting that report and say, hey, we need to add another hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to the budget, we said, okay, this is what?
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, excuse me. You know, I think, I think we're anticipating that that's gonna be one of the first things we're gonna do once that report lands. So we're trying to add it now, not like the CIP, um, and to the mayor's point, like, just putting it in here now doesn't mean that, uh, Director Stenson on May first is gonna sign a contract with Microsoft and hit go and it's all gonna go. So I think to your point, I think we, we'd probably wait to get that report, or certainly that portion of the report back before executing anything like this going forward.
So, so Mayor, did you have a follow-up?
So basically, we can move forward and, we don't have all the answers tonight, we don't have to spend another twenty minutes on this, and then we're gonna still wait anyways, right?
All agree to that and just move forward?
Can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
Could we, could we give direction to also get, when you come back, some research on the multi-year contract we talked about? Obviously knowing the year-over-year increase, if that was the case, um, more information on the migration costs, we kinda get an idea of the overall. There was one other thing, but I can't remember what it is, so, um, I think that's it for now.
Good. Director Wilson, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, that is.
Oh, I remembered my question, which I think is important in government, uh, support, you talked about product support, and I know Microsoft has different tiers of support. And I know on the government level usually the level of support required is pretty high, uh, can you also include different tiers of support from Microsoft?
Sure, sure.
Okay, that would help, so we can compare the, what it costs to send a phone for a half hour or, or twenty-four hours as opposed to getting an answer for somebody, you know, within a few, that would be helpful for us to see.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. Continue, Director Wilson?
Uh, unless there are any other questions in the administration division, uh, we'll move on to community development. With the community development, uh, there is, uh, one expanded level item being the building administrator position. And then the decrease in contractual is related to professional services, that, um, the professional services and the personnel costs for the building administrator position, the last few years have been like a teeter-totter. When we've had a building administrator, professional services have been lower, when there has not been a building administrator, the professional services have been higher. So, that's kind of the way this budget is constructed, is working under the presumption that there will be a body in that position. So if there's not, again, the salaries are gonna come down, then the pro services are gonna go up, so it is a teeter-totter, um, the last couple of years it's been, um, pretty, pretty even amongst themselves. So it's not gonna be too, uh, damaging to the budget either way, but that the preference for staff would be to have a, a person in that position versus a contractor.
And how much, uh, will we pay in HR green for that roughly?
I believe this last year, uh, Ms. Springer said it was around ninety or a hundred thousand. Yeah, around a hundred thousand.
Do we have a consensus on that to recommend?
Hire, recommend?
Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
Um, in the past, I mean, wasn't it, uh, better, I mean, didn't we talk about that it's better to have the different engineering companies because they're, they're, I mean, we could go to different engineering companies for certain things? Than have one person that might not be able to answer everything in-house, isn't that one of the benefits of having other companies?
Go ahead.
Am I thinking of a different position?
You're probably thinking of a different position, um, this position is more so just, you know, building code-type things, not engineering like stormwater-type things. I would also add that even if this position is approved, it's a big if, if we'd even be able to hire a person for this position. That is why we've been teeter-tottering back and forth over a number of years, because these people just aren't out there, so much so where the actual companies that we're outsourcing with, they have trouble even finding people. So, as Director Wilson had stated, either way we go, it's gonna teeter-totter with one account going up and one going down, it wouldn't both be going up, so. Really no different than we've been doing for the past couple of years.
Alderman Correio?
Yes, uh, there's no health insurance line on this proposal, is, could you explain why?
Excellent catch, Alderman Correio, um, so this position in years past had been incorporated in the budget, and so the health insurance had already been, um, kind of embedded in the budget. Not getting into, not trying to violate any HIPAA laws here, um, but with some of the recent hires and their healthcare decisions, um, there was gonna be cost neutral on the health insurance, um, regardless of what this position did. Based upon it being included in previous budgets and the healthcare decisions based upon current healthcare laws with some of our newer hires, so there was no need to add another twelve, fifteen, eighteen thousand in here, because it was already being absorbed into the departmental budget.
Mayor?
So this position, besides plan reviews, are they also because, personally, I used to do this, I used to do building inspections and whatnot, are they gonna be doing that as well here? Or just plan reviews?
I'd have to defer to, uh, Director Springer, Mr. Chairman.
So my understanding, um, having been here less than a year, is that we, uh, the building administrator position had primarily supervised the consultants and also some of the staff. And would do most of the plan reviews, obviously if we needed expertise outside that person's knowledge or background, we would use a consultant. But, um, we used to have in-house staff inspectors, but most recently had been using, um, an internal plan reviewer, the building administrator, and an outsourced inspection, um, staff. By, with Safebelt.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm just asking because I know she was actually doing so many inspections at Elizabeth Park and caught some things, which the residents then were pretty happy that our people did, so.
Go ahead, Director.
So, they would have the ability and if they have the time to be able to do some inspections as well. The qualifications of the position would require it.
Alderman Woods, you have a question?
I was just gonna expand on that, I mean, the primary position is plan reviewer, right?
Right.
The plus is, like you said, when issues came to us, we were able to go to her, because she's on staff, we could go out and she could go out in an emergency use type of thing, as opposed to waiting to call one of the subcontractors and waiting a day for them to come out, so. I don't think it's our plan to make her an inspector, but in an emergency, we can pull her out and she's licensed and capable of doing the inspections, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Director Springer. Continue.
Unless there's any? Alderman Jacob?
Just one question, there's, uh, vehicles maintenance, how many vehicles does this department have?
We're not hearing it yet, right?
No, it's in the, it's on page forty-nine, it's, we went directly to the expanded.
Oh, okay.
And the, for this department, it says vehicles, I'm just curious how many vehicles we have.
Yeah, in the current SURF, uh, fleet schedule, there's four.
Four?
Four, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, continue.
I was saying, unless there's any other questions, uh, on community development? Move on to finance department. No real notable changes, um, just a little bit of, uh, increase in contractual, just changing, uh, you may recall, we launched the online last year for vehicle stickers, as well as mailing the stickers directly to the residents for the honorary stickers. Uh, those both worked out pretty well last year, so we are gonna continue that, um, so that's really the reason for the increase in contractual, otherwise there's nothing specifically exciting about changes in the finance department this year. Uh, moving on to the fleece department. Alderman Jacob, sorry?
Couple of questions here, uh, I see, um, health insurance has gone down, I mean, it looks like it's gone from seventy-seven thousand to... Well, we budgeted seventy-seven thousand and we're actually gonna look at fifty-seven thousand, so is that due to what you were talking about, the health insurance before, or wha, how did that?
Sure, um, it's also just plan choices, so, uh, it's a combination of things like, uh, our PPO plans are more costly than the HMO plans, as well as family plans being more costly than single plans. So if, uh, somebody went from a higher-cost plan to a lower-cost plan, that would be part of it, or additionally someone, um, if their spouse, uh, has, you know, better insurance than us, they could opt not to take insurance. And then that would lead to a decrease, uh, within the department, so, I think, I think you're on the right track with that one. Go ahead.
And then finally, IMRF expense, how is that going down eight thousand dollars?
Go ahead. Sure, as I mentioned at the beginning, um, our rate dropped over another two percent this year, uh, and so it's just a function of salary, so it was, uh, just under nine percent last year, and it's at six point seven percent this year, so, um, just the decrease in that, um, I guess it's just a formula based on the top couple of lines, so, just dropping that couple of percent is what's driven that.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, uh, page fifty-five, education and training, those numbers, can we look at since hiring people is, uh, becoming quite the chore? Is it time to introduce tuition reimbursement or some kind of incentive that would help younger people to come into the system, stay here and go to, go to school in advance? I think that's something we should look at again. I know we were doing it for a while, and then people frowned on it, because people would get their degree and would leave, but I guess when you look at it, if that keeps the, keeps the person here for two or three years, then that may be just what it takes to do it, so. Anybody else up here?
Mayor?
Well, when we had that, so, some education is always needed. But when you finish, so, the city would provide so much, whatever it was, I forget the dollar amounts back then, but, once they're done, all of a sudden, like you said, they would leave. But I know for a fact, my daughter did some training, and I think I brought her up back then, so once she finished her training, she had to give another two or three years, and if she left before that, she had to reimburse them.
And we could do that out of date in a month or something.
Director Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have all the particulars in front of me, I don't know if, uh...
And you're not gonna have that tonight, but.
I don't know if, uh, Mr. Iberas has that, but I know that's been something that's been discussed, was if that program were to be relaunched, to have some type of phase out, like if you leave within a year, you would owe X percentage, two years, X percentage, whatever, so I think.
Most places are, are doing that.
Yeah, so that's something that's been, uh, investigated internally over the last couple of years.
Could we put those numbers together?
Go ahead, no, continue, yeah, 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 that's, that's good.
Maybe that'd be a future item? Add it as a future item, committee item?
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, being very familiar with this topic, can we make sure we add, uh, a legal component to it? Working for a major company and my wife dealing with this in her HR role, um, I wanna see what we have, talking to Pat Bond, because there are folks that will try to leave, and I just wanna make sure we have that safeguard. Where multiple times they've had to sue people to pay it back, and so if it's gonna be messy, I'd rather not even offer it. I'd like to give people the benefit of the doubt, but unfortunately, sometimes it gets messy and I don't want that, so I'd rather not do it, um, if, if it's gonna get messy.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I would definitely be in support of this, but this would be for all of staff, not just, this would be for staff across the board.
Correct. Right.
Would you be able to figure out roughly what we'd budget for that, Mr. Wilson, to add it into the budget to do that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, um, as the manager wrote it down, as a future committee item, I think we'd be able to get a pretty good idea, you know, talk to, to staff and see what they were thinking, if there were people that wanted, would wanna avail themselves of that program, and we, we could probably get some ballpark numbers.
Okay, go ahead, follow-up?
I guess my only question is, since we're passing the budget now, or we're at least talking about the budget now, would we have to have put some numbers in here?
No.
To?
No.
I would just say we've been without tuition reimbursement probably for over a decade now, I think there's a rush to put it in this fiscal year's budget. We could take it to committee and take our time.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you, I'm in a row. I mean, we could just simply come up with a, a, a budget amount that we wanna, it's first come, first served, we don't have to quiz everybody and go, how many people wanna go to school tomorrow? I mean, if the city says they wanna put in seventy-five thousand a year, or eighty thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year, whatever that number is, we have a little history to look at, you could come up with a number, right? And escalated tuition's obviously gone up, uh, and obviously we don't want every, every employee going to school at night, two at one time either, that doesn't make any sense, so. To create that chunk or that budget, first come, first served, and, and create some language in there that one person can't manipulate that whole thing by jumping in, that you have to allow some other people to cycle in, into that block of, that makes sense to me. So, that's something we could say tonight, right? I think that's what Peter would believe.
Yeah, I mean, again, if this, I mean, this is gonna help us recruit people too, when we get new staff, it's gonna be a benefit, we could tell people about that, you know, we offer that other cities might not offer. So I think we should put some kind of dollar figure to it.
Alderman Ames?
So, I know we're talking about just tuition as far as college or something, but I would think in each department, there's gotta be some technical classes that could be offered as well too, does that lump into this tuition, or is that different type of money?
Yeah, so those would, um, to the greatest extent possible, already be included in the education and training line item, or the meetings and conference line item. So, things for, um, existing license, like, uh, in the public works department, like the pesticide license, or, um, an ICC license, or my license, or whatever, like, those trainings for those types of things are already built into the budget. This would be specifically for legitimate college, um, type courses, versus, like you said, the technical one-day webinar, you know, two-day training type of things.
Go ahead, follow-up?
So, um, if there is a current employee in a department and it's enticing for them to take a certification class that maybe they don't have, to possibly pay for that, so that they would stay with the job longer, is that something that we offer now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's already part of this, like a longer training rather than a webinar, so maybe a three-year course and management skills or something like that, right, that's what's in there?
Yeah, so there's some of that, and then some of the longer-term ones are in the water department, um, specifically the treatment plant operators and the water supply operators, those are longer-form programs that, uh, our employees do participate in.
Already?
Okay.
Mayor, did you have a follow-up?
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, basically, this is not one-hundred percent coverage or whatever, let's say it's ten grand for the class and we pay all ten grand, that was like a cost share before, but it's not like we wanna pay for somebody's law license and they'll be gone in two years, because that could become...
Right, go ahead.
Yeah, just thinking back on the program was structured before, the coursework had to be, it had to be approved and, um, germane to your job.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, so there were some collars around it, so, you know, I, you know, theoretically couldn't go get a, a degree in astronomy, I mean, I could, but like, the city wouldn't reimburse me for that, but.
They give horse coats to the council.
In, in some finance things, so.
Alderman Ssmoski, you had a question?
Shirley?
We have a number of, uh, number of years ago, yeah, I think it's probably been over ten years though since we've had the program.
Yes, at least.
At least, and maybe twelve, yeah.
Alderman Messina?
I just, I just would add another caution that there's also usually a nominating process. And I have been on the side of having to nominate people or not, and it causes, it just causes problems, because then you have employees that are, if you do turn them down, it, it's just another resentment, like, why not me? It's kinda like the why am I not promoted? I just wanna throw out that caution as well, I'm not saying I'm against it, if we need to put money against it, I'm just telling you, you're about to put in a lot of work on whoever's plate, because there's all these contingency things that we have to plan for, and with DEI stuff that's now on play, it is, it is ten times harder. He's shaking his head because he knows, uh, it, with DEI, there's a lot more things to follow. He's shaking his head because he knows, uh, it, with DEI, there's a lot more things to follow. Um, that could take, that guy could. So just, just considerations if we, if we think we want to move forward. It's a full new ballgame.
Yep. Something I have to take with me. Right. So, um, Director Wilson, on, uh, page fifty-five, those credit card fees, uh, I see that they've been dropping, but then I see on other pages that we still have them. Could you explain that one, please? Go ahead.
Yeah, so the credit card fees, um, when they come in for the general fund, we collect those, um, in the finance department budget here. Uh, so you'll see the, you know, the thirty-five hundred dollars, so that's, if you divide that by two, that's how many credit card transactions and fees we've collected, uh, for that particular fiscal year. Uh, something like the metro lot, there's no way for us to charge the two dollar fee on a dollar fifty transaction. So there's no, so those, they're just eating those at cost. And then the water fund, uh, we are recouping those fees, the two dollars at the same time. But a lot of times the water fund, uh, the water bills are a lot higher, so the, the fees are, which are a percentage basis in reality, are more than the two dollars. So that's why the water fund, there's still some aggregate fees being charged to the water fund. For the general fund, they're, they're generally smaller tickets. So we're able to kinda overcome those fees on the smaller tickets.
So in respect to the, um, the parking lot fees, are we looking around municipalities, around other towns, what, what are the prices, what they're charging, what we're charging?
Yeah, we did one right, um, I guess like mid COVID, I guess if you will, and we were kinda still right in the median. There were a few, I think there's maybe one lower than us, um, probably about half at the same as us, and then three or four at a dollar seventy-five, and then there were a couple of outliers. I think you mentioned one that's like three or four dollars a day. But the majority of the stations on our line were still somewhere between one fifty and one seventy-five.
Okay. Moving right along, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, moving along to the police department, uh, which is beginning on page fifty-six of the document. Uh, as I mentioned, the contractual related to the tracks guard, uh, contract and the ACDC dispatching contract. The contractual services does include an expanded level item. Uh, so I guess let's see if there's any questions on the departmental budget lines, and then we'll move into the expanded level item.
Continue. Oh, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so I have a few questions. Uh, so personnel. I see the, looks like investigations that, uh, we budgeted six fifty-six and then that went down to four forty-eight, and now it's back up to six thirty. Is, is that just because some people left or how? I mean, why the change there? Why was it so much lower and now we're going ba- back up to the six thirty?
Yeah, sure. So we build the budget based upon full staffing, um, but as I think we all know, they're not fully staffed. So we base it on what, if everybody were in, if we had, uh, a full complement of officers, what the budget numbers would, would bear out to be. Uh, but again, unfortunately, they're not, and so that's why some of those numbers in the red column are, are quite a bit lower than, uh, the middle column. That's just the reality of how those particular divisions are staffed at this current time. But again, we budgeted full exposure because if they get fully staffed, then that's what we would have to spend.
Go ahead, follow up.
And then the longevity pay, I mean, it was like thirteen nine nine, thirteen thousand nine hundred, twenty-eight thousand, and it's gonna go down. So is that due to retirements and things or what, uh?
Go ahead. Uh, correct, yeah, it's due to retirements. Uh, you may recall, uh, a couple of longer term employees, uh, you know, chief, deputy chief, um, retiring, uh, and a sergeant, all retiring, uh, since May one. And so based upon how the Department of Insurance has told us we have to pay out those longevity payments, that's why that number is what it is. And the ten, the ten-two and the ten-five, that's what the longevity payments are, uh, to the officers based upon their contract at the current time. Presuming no retirements in the sergeant ranks for this particular fiscal year.
Go ahead.
One final question, um, page fifty-nine, the tracks guard administration. We're going from fifty-eight thousand to a hundred thirty-two thousand. Wh- what, how would we jump so high in one year?
The defer to Chief Zito on that one.
Okay, chief?
Or Deputy Chief Benazinski on the one.
So with the tracks guard, um, it was a multi-year contract with an option to renew two years at a time and a year at a time. We're up for a one-year renewal. Um, if you look back at twenty twenty-one, you can see where it actually was. And then subsequent year went down. We're in a year where it's going back up, um, significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Director.
I'm sorry.
City manager, members.
I believe the reason why it fluctuates like that is not just on a whim, it's because this is the year of a replacement cycle for the equipment as part of the contract.
That's what we're thinking. Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions for chief? Thank you, chief.
Yeah, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we keep him up there for the expanded line item or should we make him, could we make him stand for the next few minutes? Sorry, chief?
Uh, yeah, the expanded level item, the software platform, again, I would defer to the chief for the finer points on that.
Okay, sorry, if you're gonna address, I just, I just, the big question I had when I went through is, is this self-service that we're proposing or is this our folks that are intake completing this? This is where I was confused, but it sounds like you'll address this.
It's both. So there's, there's a public facing portal that will help us make overnight parking more efficient, uh, vacation washes more efficient, special washes that we do more efficient. Um, and then there's an internal component that will help us on our end with field training program software. A, additional software that will make us go paperless in, in some modes. Um, so it's both, answer your question.
Go ahead.
I really liked the body camera, worn audits piece of it. I think it pays for itself. I guess the part that, this pays for itself regardless of how good this is. When I thought about self-service, I think about when I do vacation watches. It is painful on both ends. It's painful to do it on the website. Uh, it's, I mean, horrible, no offense. Well, no one created it in here, so. Painful, but then the other opposite, when we call ACDC, I don't know what's more painful. They have no, no clue when I, you know, when I'm like, yep, spruce, road, you know? And what town again? So like, it frustrates me and I can't imagine wouldn't frustrate people that are residents are like, do you not? Like, I know that it's ACDC, but most people just get very frustrated. So I'm just hoping as this rolls out and obviously we'll, we'll be able to see it, maybe see it because it's so cheap, I don't know. But will we be able to see the UI and actually make sure that it's something that a normal human being could fill out very easily? So that we can actually use it because the website process is painful.
Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, we've, we've demoed it to make sure that it's, it's user friendly, um, on the public side. Um, as painful as it is right now for the public, it's more painful for us on the internal side, which is why we're requesting this item.
Yeah, I would provide direction to move forward.
Mayor, did you have a question?
Yeah, so this is more cloud-based. This can't be used also with, uh, one we were talking about earlier with Microsoft? No, they don't have that. It's just another thing that we gotta separate. Has to, they have to be separate.
Go ahead, chief.
So right now, we, we're using a lot of Excel forms, Google Docs on the internal side. Um, this'll put it all in one place. It'll be on the cloud, but it'll be accessible to us and also the public for their vacation watches, overnight parking, stuff like that.
Hold on, Woods, you had a question?
Yeah, first a statement. This has gotta save you double or triple what it would pay for it, for sure. But secondly, is there anywhere we could see a demo? Do they have something online that we could look at? I know I went online, they don't have anything that's open to the public without filling out some form or something. I would think that they have a video that we could see that gives us a little better insight into what's there other than what's available for the general public.
Go ahead.
They don't, that we have found. Um, that's why we did some internal Zoom type, uh, demos with them. Uh, we checked out a couple of different vendors to make sure we're getting the best product that'll work for us. But unfortunately, no, they don't have any YouTube videos or any videos that actually demonstrate it. Um, I think they're worried about competition.
Alderman Jacob, you had a question?
Yeah, um, so will ACDC be able to see this too? So like some of the things like overnight parking and the vacation watches? Now, I mean, they're called out sometimes, so will they be able to see that, oh, this person's, this?
There's different layers of access, so they'll have a layer, patrol officers and CSOs will have a layer, supervisors will have a different layer.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Ames?
So is this twelve thousand per year or is there a multi-year contract for this or how, how does that work?
Uh, this would be an annual subscription, um, and they're telling us the annual increase generally, uh, industry standard is five percent.
Go ahead, follow up.
So they don't have like any kind of a discounted program like we were talking about earlier for multi-year to get a lower rate?
They do not have any multi-year discounts, but they have package discounts where you can get modules individually, all apart pricing. Um, for what we're looking for, the cheaper cost is go, is to go with the package deal.
Mayor?
So is this company like, uh, here in the state, in the US or what? It's cause.
Yeah, they're local. I believe they're based out of Elmhurst.
Nigeria, that's where I'm, yeah, why I'm asking.
Elmhurst. Alderman Messina, did you have a question?
I, a couple of questions, I guess, maybe for, um, Director Stinson. Do we have that, do we have any instances of dyna- to, to the mayor's point of dynamics where they could, we could spin up and develop an application?
Go ahead.
This seems like it's very niche and not trying to downplay it for what it's doing, but.
I do have experience with this offer from my previous employer, um, and it's a very good product, uh, specific to.
This product?
Yeah, correct. So we use it at my previous employment, um, and it does save a lot of time. It's specific to, uh, law enforcement and it's licensed, um.
Well, my, my question is, do we have di- do we have any instances of Dyn- Microsoft Dynamics, which is like a CRM system? We can, we can develop an app and essentially do the same thing. That's what they're doing, but obviously not, we're not specialists, right? Whoever would develop it?
Yeah, so we would either have to purchase or contract out, uh, to have, uh, uh, obviously software programmers and, and database programmers to obviously develop a product.
So we don't have anybody on staff that.
No.
Developer that could just develop the app.
No.
For us and call it a day.
Okay, so moving right along. Any more questions on, on the subject? Okay, go ahead, Director Wilson. Thank you, uh.
Thank you.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, moving on to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Again, the budget's relatively small. Um, the only thing just kind of of note is that, uh, in talking to Chief Zito, we might have to do another, uh, officer test before, uh, our regularly scheduled test. Just that they get through the entire list before that timing comes up, we would have to do another test. So there are some costs included in this budget. Working on the premise that we'll probably have to do another test before what would otherwise be our normal, our normal schedule.
Okay. Jacob?
Yeah, and the testing back in twenty-two was like twenty-four thousand dollars. And knowing that we've been short people for the last few years, wouldn't the testing actually be more expensive than the eight thousand? Or how do we get to twenty-four thousand one year?
Yeah, there were a couple of things with that one. One, um, I believe that was the year they changed the way they did the sergeant testing, um, to the assessment center. And then also, I believe we pay per candidate, so if we have a year where five hundred people show up, it will cost more. If only eighty show up, it's gonna cost less and a lot shorter list, but I'll defer to, to the chief.
Chief?
Yeah, Director Wilson's absolutely right. Uh, most of that cost was the new sergeant format testing that we went with to do a practical exam versus just a, a written test.
Okay, moving right along. Thanks, chief.
Uh, moving into Public Works Administration, um, really the only thing, uh, any excitement this year in the Public Works Administration budget is the expanded level item for the Public Works Management Analyst. Uh, which that is the green sheet on page sixty-eight, uh, but probably look to see if there's any questions on sixty-six or sixty-seven before moving into, uh, the expanded level item on sixty-eight. So try to get through the line items first if there's any, um, and then go to the expanded level item.
He's been dying for this all day. I think I got five calls from him. Please, go ahead. You go, you go first.
It wasn't, it was like one call. Uh, so a couple of questions. Well, first of all, on uniforms, how much does these, how much does each person get for a uniform allowance?
Uh, six hundred.
Well, but we're budgeting sixteen thousand, so we have three, how many people in the department? Three?
Three.
Or is, or, this is for administration, is it not? Public Works Administration, or is that for everybody?
So all of the, uh, employees' uniforms come for all of Public Works comes out of, um, the administration line up.
Okay, that, that's what I, and that's when I saw that number on there, I thought it was just for the administration and I'm like, well, that's a lot of clothes.
Yeah, we're not buying suits.
They're buying Louis Vuitton.
Yeah, huh, sure. And then, um, so on the green sheet, uh, you know, I, first of all, I have to compliment Alan and Patrick. I mean, since I've been coming to these meetings and been in town, I don't think Public Works has ever run so smoothly. So I guess my question is, why do we all of a sudden need an eighty-five thousand dollar a year person when we got two people doing a wonderful job? And I'm, I'm not sure what other jobs they're gonna, three, what three? Sorry, sorry, Brett. Three people doing a wonderful job. Uh, not sure what like, we need an additional person here for.
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
I would have to defer to Mr. Lang.
Mr. Lang, Director Lang?
Concur with Alderman Jacob's sentiment and defer to Mr. Lang.
Thank you all, and thank you, Chairman. Uh, this position would be responsible for a number of ongoing administrative tasks that we're hoping to improve and expand upon, uh, coupled being, uh, identifying and pursuing grant funding opportunities, uh, managing our right-of-way permit program, so tracking contractors, uh, their certificates of insurance, their bonds, making sure we have the proper licenses, uh, licensing agreements in place, making sure that the proper fees are being collected, uh, scheduling the appropriate inspections for those, making sure that the right-of-ways are being restored properly. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we're hoping to consolidate some of the facilities contracts such as janitorial and HVAC, hoping that we can improve services there and possibly get some better cost for those. Uh, also, we are responsible for tracking all of the backflow devices in town, um, and there's a number of them that are non-compliant. At any given point, we could be around fifteen percent, uh, non-compliant devices. So there's a lot of administrative responsibilities there that we have to issue notices and track and keep on top of properties and contractors to make sure that they're, they have the proper devices, that they're getting them tested, that they're going through the permitting process, and that involves a great deal of coordination with the community development department. And then there's another, uh, there's a handful of other administrative tasks, asset management. We, we hope to keep better track of our assets, uh, through a strategic asset management plan in the near future here, and this position would be heavily involved in that. So it's a, a number of areas that we're currently involved in, but because of time constraints due to our operating responsibilities and capital projects, we feel that we can improve and expand upon.
Follow up, Mr. Jacob?
I, I guess the only thing is, uh, you know, you three have been doing a wonderful job and I, I really don't see how, uh, you guys have been handling it thus far. I mean, I haven't really heard any complaints that you guys are being over tasked with this stuff and things have been going smooth. Why the sudden change after?
Senator Murmus?
Well, I, I would like to note that things are going smooth. I would agree they've gone smoother than ever before. But when they're coming to me and telling me that they need some extra assistance, I have to respect their, their opinion that they need that assistance. And perhaps things are going so well because they're involved in more things now and, uh, we need some extra administrative help. And plus too, we have a brand new public works building with some empty offices.
We're gonna fill them up. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So a couple of questions. Um, you, you mentioned a few times, uh, the backflow prevention. I know those are outsourced because I think I'm part of that fifteen percent more a couple of times, but, uh, all kidding aside, like, are, will that eliminate that cost? Because I know we outsource that right now. Is that what you're telling me?
So we outsource the monitoring and the tracking of that. There, it's in coordination with staff that that, uh, that third party, uh, monitors. So anytime there's a backflow device installed, if there's a new device, community development has to notify the contractor of their requirement to register it with BSI online is the, uh, the third party consultant that we use. And then the, we've recently started, uh, increasing. And then the, we've recently started, uh, increasing coordination with Community Development through the Commercial Occupancy Program, identifying properties that should have backflow devices but do not, and therefore are not being monitored by BSI to get those, uh, installed and registered.
So it would be commercial, industrial, not residential?
Residential are part of it, but a vast majority of the non-compliant devices are in the industrial sector.
But I'm saying the individual that you're proposing, could, could they ta, offset some of that? Like, I don't know what we, what, what we pay BCI, but could that person offset some of that? 'Cause maybe that could help pay for some, defray some of the costs.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there would be a reduction in service from BSI, um, it's just more staying compliant. We're required by the IEPA to monitor our backflow devices and prevent any...
So we would still keep it outsourced even if we brought the individual on?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll have another question eventually, go ahead.
Just follow-up, go ahead.
You're sure, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I gotta think through it.
Okay.
Well, I was just...
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, piggyback on, uh, Alderman Messina, I think we're mixing the two things. One is the monitoring of it, that's that service and that's not gonna change.
Correct.
The in-house guy that you're the management analyst, he's gonna be the guy keeping all the records that are required by the EPA and the IEPA to keep us out of, uh, trouble. Uh, I'm assuming part of that, I didn't really see it on here, but would be monitoring contracts and looking at the warranties. I've said this many years, year after year, does anybody have a list, right? If we get a two-year warranty, is anybody back up six months and go, hey, let's go review that street, that sidewalk, that sign, or whatever? This is the guy that could watch that and trigger those defaults so that we could get some, reap some value from those warranties that we get. I don't think that we ever take, uh, advantage of.
Correct, yeah, co, contract administration would fall under this position.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I'll start, I'll start with he, him, her, hers.
What?
They.
They, anybody, could, instead of he, just to be correct. Uh, that individual, uh, could manage that, and I, I know there's some examples of where there's all these agreements, and we always joke about all these agreements that are so old, and here we are, they, you know, we find them, and, you know, it's this mad scramble, but to me, that's where I think the value is, is like, which shouldn't, you guys shouldn't hold the knowledge if you guys move on someday, right? That, that knowledge, that institu, institutional knowledge goes with you, and that next person's left to pick up the pieces unless we digitize, digitalize it and save the agreements, right? We have agreements all over the place, it's a disaster, and it's an embar, personally an embarrassment, right? Makes us all look bad, even though it was fifty, sixty years ago in some cases. Um, the...
Mr. Lang said he's gonna be here another forty years.
Well, especially now since I have the new facility.
He's gonna have to.
You guys made it too good for me to leave.
Because of Peter's comment, Brett's gonna leave next week, so, uh, he's gonna have to. Uh, no, but all kidding aside, so it, it's, I know you have a lot on your plate, I just think that, like, is there a way if we try this? 'Cause I do think it could pay for itself with just the, the grants piece of it. Could you set some KPI, or be willing to set up like some key metrics for that individual to hit so that we could actually determine if it's worthwhile after a year?
Yeah, I think while there's maybe not the direct, uh, cost-saving correlation or cost-recovery correlation, I think there is some opportunity for some, some savings, not only, uh, as you mentioned, um, but also through the chasing down the licensing agreements which we're supposed to have and collecting the proper fees through the permitting process, which, uh, we, we are a little bit behind on. So that's an area that we want this individual to focus on, absolutely.
Okay, so moving right along, and, hey, you wanna follow up?
Well, this is, uh, possibly another green sheet. Wha, whatever happened a couple, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, we talked about kinda having an internal maintenance person, the... Facilities manager, is that something that's still needed, or have we kinda figured that that's on?
Yeah, so if you recall that conversation, there was, um, it was kinda unclear whether that position would be more administrative or more operating. And, uh, what we've done is we were able to consolidate some of those administrative tasks that we would have foreseen falling to a facilities manager under this individual, like the strategic asset management plan, uh, and kind of monitoring our, our assets and tracking maintenance and trying to schedule replacement more efficiently.
Do you need, do they need direction for this, or?
No, we're gonna, we've got consensus that we're gonna, we're gonna continue with this, right?
Unless it's a no.
Unless it's a no.
Okay.
So, go, go ahead, uh, Director Wilson, continue.
Okay, that was exactly what the mayor said, unless, unless there was a change in...
Right.
Color of the sheet, then.
Green.
Um, moving on to the Streets Division. Um, again, uh, net budget's down a little over eighty-two thousand, uh, predominantly driven by personnel, uh, the ERI, retirements, uh, some transfers to other divisions, and then just the newer employees coming in at the bottom of the wage scale versus where those employees were. Otherwise, nothing specifically, um, unique about the budget this year for the Streets Department, but certainly entertain any questions.
Alderman Jacob?
Uh, just the, um, seasonal employments, are we planning on hiring more seasonal staff this year? I see it's went from ninety-five hundred to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, I, just checking the number. Yeah, we always, uh, hoped to get four. Um, this last year, I believe we had at most two at any given time. So we budget for four, and then we get what we can get.
Continue.
Um, Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Two questions. Did, was there a reason we dropped the Parkway Tree replacement budget? That's, uh, forty-two, one oh-three, page seventy-one.
Go ahead, Director Lang.
Yeah, we dropped that to be more reflective of the actual cost that we were incurring. We've also been very fortunate. Uh, Assistant Director Hastings has had some great success working with the Chicago Region Tree Initiative and having a, a great handful of trees, trees donated to the city. We got sixty within the last year, so that, that's helped release the burden.
Yeah, give me that, boy. I made the recommendation.
Alderman Woods?
Just kidding, well, I'm not kidding, but, uh, so that's one of them, but, I mean, I know there's some projects too for the Parkway. I mean, I just wanna make sure that that's going to be enough for some of the projects, I know even just in our ward that we've talked to you about. Is, is that gonna be sufficient amount?
It has in recent years, um, you know, based on the number of requests that we get from residents, as well as us actively trying to plant in open spaces. That's been right around the number that we've been coming in at.
Second question, not intended to be funny, but it probably is funny, but where is the, uh, damaged mailboxes and damaged things go under?
I believe that comes out of, uh, other materials and, uh, commodities.
Other, other parts and materials?
Other parts and materials on page seventy-two.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Woods, do you have a question?
Yeah, the, uh, back to the tree replacements, so in the community development, when we have developments and they have to, uh, either give us money or plant trees, is that covered under part of this? Are you including that in how many trees we're planting?
So I'm not sure I understand your question, you're saying for this...
Under, under, in a development where they are taking down trees and they have to replace like-kind and they can't do them on-site, they're either giving us money towards planting trees or they are planting trees, where is that reflected in here? How, how does that get triggered from community development if they give us seventy thousand, eighty thousand, ten thousand? We've had multiple properties that have done it. Mr. Wilson, maybe that's a better difference?
Yeah, so money for, I, cash in lieu of trees, I guess we like the word phrase. Yeah, um, we'd go, we have an account on the GL, it's a, a ballot sheet account, not an income statement account, called Tree Escrow Account.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so money that would go into there is specifically restricted to use to replace trees. So if there's a bigger project and we need to either go outside of this budget, or if there's a specific project specifically like within that subdivision or that area, we would tap into that Tree Escrow money to replace trees in that area, uh, with that cash in lieu of amount.
So that money, if I can follow up, that money's sitting there in hold, waiting for us to use it, and really isn't even any part of this ten thousand. This ten thousand's just our normal, from the general fund budget, to replace trees. So we got a nice parcel of money, when I find those locations for the trees, we can plant all of them without any problem. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Continue, uh, Director Wilson?
Sure. Uh, moving on to vehicle maintenance. Um, again, aside from just the increase in salary, um, again, per the contract, nothing, uh, specifically exciting about vehicle maintenance budget this year. No offense to the guys in the garage, they do a great job, but the budget's not that exciting. Um, so that is the end of the general fund. Uh, so moving on into the special revenue funds. Uh, here's a listing of the special revenue funds, so we know what's coming up next. Uh, so we have road and bridge, motor fuel tax, tourism, uh, narcotics forfeiture, TIF one, TIF two, and TIF three.
So on page seventy-seven, I have a question on the, um, natural gas utilities on Royal Oaks. So it's ju, so the gas prices, of course, are going up, and, and what does this, um, what does this pay again? I, I, you wanna, you know, uh, I'm trying to remember that, that line on Royal Oaks.
I have been...
What specifically is that paid for, I think?
May I, uh, may I interject?
Yes.
Um, I believe it's six hundred dollars a month, but I have great news for you.
Okay.
I have a folder of proof that we, not us, prior administrations where they, he, him, them, uh, whoever, anybody, somebody, the mayor, at the time, actually signed an agreement.
All right. Yeah, we know that.
Not this mayor. Not him. Oh, yeah, so, so, all, all, my point is, it's always been speculation that it was this backdoor deal. Uh, we got a file full from the HOA proving, signed off by the city attorney, so...
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
My problem is it's twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Yep.
They're always on, that's my problem.
And we have, we have a plan that they're working on, meaning they have some ideas to retrofit, uh, that we're throwing out to, we didn't wanna bring it to council yet.
Right.
But now that we have proof that in fact, you know, we paid for half of them, prior administrations is what it is, we agreed to this crazy agreement, they came to us and said, yeah, there might be grants, there you go, something for that new person to do. There may be grants to convert from gas to, to electric. And uses the example of the government coming after people on their stoves.
And showed those electric lights would come off during the day, instead of burning.
Right, so more, more to come. We, we just wanted to make sure, first, we wanted to make sure we had our bases covered. Me and Peter met with that board, they have every single agreement that proves it, and now we'll leave it up to staff to figure out, are there grants that could make this feasible cheaper for both parties and all that? We're on, they're on it.
Listen, I don't have a problem with those gas lights, I just don't want them running. Like I said, every day, summer, winter, three hundred and sixty-five days, they're always running, it doesn't make sense, that's all.
Yep.
Continue.
I, I was just gonna say, unfortunately, I, I don't think you could turn the gas streetlights off. I mean, there's no switch like with the, with the electric, or put them on a timer, at least I don't believe there is a way to do that. Correct?
Sure there is, go ahead.
Not an electrician or a gas expert, so...
He's like, I just wanted to go over somewhere.
Continue.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, listen, is there any other questions on road and bridge, we'll move on. Moving on to motor fuel tax. Uh, the increase in contractual, or the interfund, uh, is related to, uh, costs related to the Elizabeth Drive Bridge, uh, the city match, and we talked about that during the CIP process, as well as some funding for the initial engineering study, which I believe was a committee two weeks ago, for the signal at the corner of Central and Irving Park. And then just the contractual's up a little bit just due to streetlight maintenance. It's kind of in line with previous years, so there's, there's nothing out of the ordinary about that number, just kinda right sizing that number in this year's budget.
Mayor, go ahead. So as we put more streetlights up throughout the city, that number should, will go up, I take it, correct? Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do we, sorry.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
I mean, at some point, do we wanna consider escalating that number?
Well, we did last year, we moved it to a hundred thousand, correct?
Yep.
That we, from thirty thousand, we, we did move it up to a hundred thousand, so, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to be clear, that's the in, installation of lights, this is just the maintenance of the city streetlights. So I thi, I think as that number, as the mayor said, as more lights go up, as we see those costs start to go up, to trend up, we'll continue to trend along with, with that on the maintenance side of things.
Okay, continue.
Sure. Uh, next is the tourism front. Uh, so the increase in personnel, uh, there is an expanded level item in here, uh, to make the dialer ride driver full-time from part-time. And then in other, uh, there was a significant increase in special events that was offset by, uh, the removal of the city signage that is expected to be done, I believe still this fiscal year, or very early next fiscal year at the latest. So the signage number went down to zero, but the special events number went up by approximately a hundred thousand, netting out to that twenty-seven thousand. So again, uh, the personnel, uh, item, the special, uh, expanded level item, and then the increase in the special events line item.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, the dial ride, do we go over a couple of numbers? What, what's the, the overall number salary for that driver? Can you just give me the total?
Go ahead.
Sure, so just the salary, the base salary, uh, per the union contract for her position and her step is, within a few cents, sixty-three thousand, five fifty-eight, just for the salary.
Plus insurance and everything.
Correct, yeah, so if you look at page eighty-one, the personnel line item total for this year, which is inclusive of the expanded level item, is projected out to be ninety thousand, six ninety-one.
So, for the dial ride, I, I like the program, I've always advocated to expand it, it's a great program. I think I have a little issue going to one driver versus two drivers, one, we're occurring all kinds of costs. But if that driver's sick or goes on vacation, now we don't have a driver, so, and, from what I know, I mean, we have a steady, pretty steady ridership, and a lot of those people really depend on it, whether it's people with special needs to go to work programs, people going to doctor visits, and, and just getting out and going to the jewel and stuff like that. So have we thought about that? I'm, I'm not making the argument, I'm just looking at it, and structurally, it seems that it would be better to have the two part-time drivers so that we have some backup or flexibility if somebody's off or sick, especially when you look at some of the things that we've gone through lately, as opposed to, if they get sick for a week or to go to the hospital for a week, or two weeks, then we shut down the program, right? And there, like I say, a lot of people really rely on this program to get to and from, uh, different locations.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to, uh, Mr. Lang on that. I know in the past there were some other backup drivers internally, I don't know where that stands.
Go ahead, Director. That's correct, we have, uh, backup drivers on staff, some of our union members are, uh, approved by pace to be backup drivers in the event that the van driver is not available.
Okay. Go ahead.
So when you say are people, so one of the Public Works truck drivers or one-fifty operators or something, they're gonna jump in the van and drive that van?
Correct.
As opposed to doing the job that they would normally do during the day?
Correct.
So again, that's an issue, if we're just swapping one guy, I'm sure he's got things to do other than drive the bus, that's great that we can cover for a day in an emergency, but again, going to being off for a week or more, then we're losing that guy for a week. I just think it's something we need to, to look at, having a single source, really.
Director Lang? Any managers, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a, this is a little bit of a difficult one. While it seems like the program runs smooth up here, and we always have these utopian two part-time drivers, uh, that's really not the case to find these two utopian part-time drivers. Um, we have a current employee, uh, that's an excellent driver, uh, there's no guarantee that that current employee is going to stay a part-time driver. Um, it's hard enough to find these utopian Wooddale part-time drivers, uh, hence this item coming forward this year. Um, we're kind of in some unique circumstances over there, and, uh, we felt that it was in the best interest of the program, long-term, to go this route, um, due to certain circumstances, because we know how important it is to the seniors in town and how the council values the program, and everybody talking about it, we thought this would give the residents the best service long-term. Um, but if we wanna keep it as is, we can roll the dice and continue to try to go that way. But just know, it's not, uh, it's not easy, uh, getting these bodies for this type of position.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor? No, here, follow up. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I'm not picking on either one, I'm just pointing out the, the shortfall there, and I think the, I never used the word utopia drivers. Yeah, so I'm not picking on either one, I'm just pointing out the, the shortfall there, and I think the, I never use the word utopia drivers. Takes this, but, uh, I like the, well, that's a long call, so if we get somebody who wants to go to Pennsylvania or the west coast, it will be a call. But to your point, we've, we've upped the salary. I don't know what the range was we were trying to hire at, but if we upped the salary to the part-time person, I think it would be easier to get that person as opposed to where we were salary-wise. If you're telling me that we're gonna spend ninety thousand dollars, I, I think I would make an argument that we should be able to find two part-time people that would work for forty-five thousand dollars.
I agree with that.
I mean, do you, I mean, that's a pretty good sell, forty-five thousand dollars. I mean, I don't know where the part-time person was before. I'm gonna guess it was at, well, under thirty, sub-thirty. Maybe I'm wrong. And that's why we couldn't find it.
I'm just saying, this is a brewing problem. Director Lang has been talking about this for some time, and it's going to be a problem.
Mayor, go ahead.
So, I remember last summer, saw signs all over town, they were trying to hire bus drivers, and they were offering, I think, twenty-one dollars an hour. And that's part-time. And I asked on this and I found out that ours is a union position, and they're making, I believe, thirty dollars. Was that what I understood? Mr. Wilson, or, or is that what you told me? I, I don't, I want to make sure I get the facts right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't remember the specific salary, but you are correct, uh, that it is a union position, so the starting salary will be the, the bottom of the union pay range. So, so it, we are theoretically a little hamstrung in what we can offer, uh, for the starting pay due to it being a, a union position and the pay scales.
Go ahead.
And, and follow-up, so, 'cause I was asking these questions. So my understanding was it was three days, so I was a driver week one, three days, and you were two days, and week two, you were three days, and I was two days. So basically, we're working five days every two weeks. We're working one week. So honestly, I, I'm with you. I'm like, why can't we get two drivers at forty-five thousand?
Even, even if you had to bump it up to fifty thousand, I, I still think it's a better, I, I understand that this is an issue, believe me. I, I'm with you, so I, I just have an issue going to one, one person.
Director Lang, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So we did originally pursue, um, replacing the, the second part-time driver, uh, upon his retirement, um, July of twenty, twenty, twenty-one. And, uh, at that time, we went through a variety of postings, and the few qualified individuals that we did interview, uh, none of them accepted because they were seeking full-time employment. Uh, so I'm not sure if it's a salary issue or they're more, more looking for benefits and stability. And since that time, since July of twenty twenty-one, this individual, uh, has handled the responsibility, ridership has remained, uh, consistent through that time, and they've been able to, uh, to handle that, that workload satisfactorily. The, the position requires a great amount of care for elderly individuals, people who have, you know, significant needs, um, and it's, uh, she's done an incredible job, and we, we would like to retain her in a full-time manner.
And, and just my last comment, so I've heard great things about her. So this isn't about her being good or not being good. We're about spending ninety-five thousand or a hundred. It's just structurally putting this together so that there's some, there's some backup. Much like we have you as a public works director, we have Patrick as assistant, we get Corelli over in, now we're hiring another guy. And it's amazing to me that we can make those arguments, but then we have something else and we go, ah, one person can handle it. They'll never be sick, they'll never go on vacation. Nothing's ever gonna happen, there's never an accident. I mean, those things happen. And, and again, it's a hard, hard position to fill. Bus drivers, right? There's a lot of people up here, I, I just, if we have to raise it to a hundred and ten to get the two drivers.
Wait, wait, take it easy.
Well, we're, we're gonna argue over twenty thousand. We all agree it's a good program. A lot of people depend on it. If, if I'm saying, if, if that's the thing that's stopping us,
Yeah.
Then, just an option. I, you know, I.
Non, non-union bus dri- uh, companies are paying twenty-five dollars an hour now.
Yeah. Well, this is, so this is at forty-three sixty. And I'm okay with forty-three sixty. My only issue is there's only one person.
Yeah.
Alderman Sinema, go ahead.
I tend to, tend to agree with Alderman Woods, um, right? Take it while you can, right? But what, what, what about the, uh, public works management analyst? Can that person be cross-trained to handle, handle that as a floater?
But you need a CDO.
So by the, uh, by the collective bargaining agreement, we cannot, I have duties performed by a non-union individual.
Because she's a union. Taking a page out of Peter's book. If she's doing a great job already, can we just offer her more, more money?
So, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we. Right, but if we make her full-time, do we not incur additional, like, benefit costs and all that?
That's what it is.
Alright.
Okay, Alderman Ames, go ahead.
So are there any levels of part-time employment that offer benefits, like minimum hours or something? If benefits are what people are after, maybe not so much a full-time position, but if you work at least twenty-five hours a week or something, can that qualify for benefits? If that would entice more part-time applicants?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so currently, the way our standard is set, none of our part-time positions qualify for benefits. Um, and basically, I don't really wanna give the number on camera, but if they were qualified for benefits, they would effectively be full-time. So, yeah, the, the part-time working, uh, in essence, give or take forty hours on a two-week cycle, would be an average of twenty hours per week, and that falls below our Affordable Care Act threshold for benefits.
Alderman Jacob?
So I'm looking at the salary right now, sixty-three, five fifty-eight, so that's roughly thirty-one, five a year. So as Alderman Woods said, we bump up the salary to forty-five thousand, and, I mean, does this have to be a union position? I mean, you had set it to union position, we.
Could we not, uh, so to your point?
Alderman, uh.
I didn't get to finish my point. It was in the middle of the point. Can we just outsource it? Could we not just outsource this position and make?
Go ahead.
Why does?
So does that have to be a union position? Yes. Can we outsource it? No.
Why can't we outsource it?
Because we would explicitly be eliminating a le- a union position for the express purpose of outsourcing it, which is prohibited by the contract. And, and upping the salary, the salary ranges are set per the contract.
Yeah.
So this, I believe, is the, then we'll get into it too much, but the top of the range, so there is no increasing the salary. You know, we could theoretically petition the union to start the person not at the bottom of the salary scale, um, but the, the position and the salaries are set by the union pay scale.
I went in the wrong business, man. Jesus.
Go ahead, um, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, I mean, typically, unions are there to help the employees, so if we went to the union and said, we want, we want to raise the salary from thirty-one, five to forty-five, I mean, I can't see the union saying, no, we're not gonna allow that. I mean, if they understand the situation.
Yeah, you, you, you open up a can of worms. Okay, next.
We're not trying to raise this person's salary. So, I think we're, I think we're getting off track.
Yep. Okay. So we can continue and move forward, yeah. Let's go. Thank you. Go ahead. Yes. Mm-hmm. Right.
So we're.
We're moving forward.
Well, we're, yeah, I mean, this is green, which means if we say nothing, it's going forward, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, Director Wilson.
Well, we have a standoff. We have one side saying, no, we can't do it, and the other side saying, no, we think it's possible to do it. Right, they're, they're in the trenches, staff is in the trenches. In all fairness, I know that you've had to deal with this, and it's been a pain in the butt, especially the last couple of years, for sure. Again, I'm just looking at it, not from the economic standpoint, not from the money that we would spend. I'd be willing to spend more money. I'm looking at it that we're stuck with one person. And if anything happens to that one person, the whole system is down. I know that you told me that we can take an operator and put him in a bus, but that operator was sent out to do a, a water thing. We didn't know until nine o'clock. Right, he's digging a hole and he's gotta come and drive the bus. That's not gonna happen. We know it's not. So, maybe there's another way or another backup or somehow that you could build this into your system with your workers or employees over there, that there is a particular backup that's always ready to go. And I'm not even mentioning the fact that the person leaves in six months. Out of the blue. Right? So, that, that's my sole argument, is just that we're reliant on one, one person. There's no backup or redundancy to get into computers. Bingo.
Continue.
Do we do a roll call? What do we do?
So do you have a consensus? No, yes, so?
I'm a no. He's a no.
I'm a no. I don't wanna stop the, the, the program. Is there, so we need somebody to drive the bus, right? She's probably gonna be, they are probably gonna be upset, right? Because they probably believe this is coming down the pike, right? Does that, would that be a true statement?
Go ahead, Director.
I believe we'll be in a situation that we'll have two vacancies to fill, if we stay part-time.
So, go ahead. Wanna do a roll call? We do a roll call.
Again, if I, I don't wanna stop the program. I think we all have the same.
I don't want to be held hostage either. If she leaves, if that individual leaves, they leave, because if somebody made that commitment or promise, shame on them.
It's not, it's not.
We have to reset and go zero?
Not a promise. It's not a promise. It's just historically hiring for that position, and this was a suggestion as an idea to avoid having the trouble that we have hiring a position, retaining a good, long-time employee for a program that everybody likes. We're not opposed to doing part-time. We're just telling you, it's been difficult.
Go ahead.
One, what was the part-time salary that we were paying?
Go ahead.
Do you, do you have that number ready, available?
Yeah, so the, just the, the total aggregate part-time salary, if you look at page eighty-one of the budget book under part-time employment, that's what we had been paying, um, the one, or the two people in fiscal twenty-one. And then the last two years, uh, since the previous driver left, that's what we had been paying on a part-time basis. Again, still a union position following along the union scale. We had been some more, you know, just a little bit north of fifty thousand the last couple of years. And so, again, that was it.
So just a, a.
Go ahead, follow.
So, my point is that for two people, for fifty-two thousand, you're having a hard time. And what I'm saying is, could you hire two people at fifty thousand apiece?
I don't think she wants to work more. She wants to make more.
Right.
Mayor?
I mean, I can't imagine that we couldn't do that, trying to, I'm, I'm almost ready to apply myself, but I can't.
Mayor?
And, so you're telling me in twenty twenty-one, the forty-four thousand was two, but now this year, fifty-two thousand is one, and she's only working half the time? How, how is, how are they, how are we paying fifty-two thousand for one when you're telling me only working half the time? I'm, I'm confused.
Well, she's driving every day between six, seven hours a day, so she's working all the day. She's working every day.
Oh, so this person is, is basically filling in for the other driver.
Correct.
And that's why we're, okay, now I understand. So, so if that's working every day, you can't tell me she's still under twenty hours, and they're not qualifying for benefits now.
Go ahead.
So she's still working under the benefit threshold.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so she's under the benefit threshold slightly, um, and so going full-time would obviously then trigger the benefits. But she's still slightly under the, the benefit threshold on average for the entire year.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Just getting too deep into the math, but how is that possible if there's sixteen hundred and seventy-eight rides? That's, uh, six point five rides a day. We'll call it an hour as an average, like going back and forth, different people off. I think you gotta check the vehicle and then check it out, test it, you gotta get gas, so how is six and a half hours a day not pierce that threshold?
Go ahead.
So she's pierced the IMRF threshold, um, which is a thousand hours, so if you're averaging over four a day, then you're over that threshold. Uh, but the benefits, the healthcare threshold is higher than six and a half hours a day on average for the year.
What is that? For good IFRS?
Okay, let's, uh, continue. We're gonna continue. Unless you don't want to put it up for a vote?
I think.
Let's continue. Let's go.
Do we want to do a roll call?
Well, we're gonna need, it sounds like we need a, yes, to continue the program with the extra thirty-one thousand, no. You say no, that's to keep it the way it is, so I'm just curious.
Look, if I was making a motion, I'd make the motion to increase the budget that we would need to get two part-time drivers. That's forty-five thousand apiece. We have people driving for.
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand. We're, we're doubling it. That's where the world's at for that, right? We're just not gonna get around it. And if that number's fifty, then it's fifty, but we're already, you're already saying, I gotta spend ninety thousand and then stuck with one person. Could be the best person in the world. But they're gonna get sick or on vacation, possibly leave.
Go ahead.
So can we call it the hybrid approach? Get a motion on the hybrid approach?
So we're gonna, we're gonna allocate the money, but you guys will look at both options, right? To Alderman Woods' point, whi- which is what we just said, right? Like, we'd rather give more money. I'm positive she doesn't want to work more. She wants more money, so we're increasing the budget. We're saying it's ninety thousand, whatever that number is, and then look at both options.
Mayor, go ahead.
So, this is coming forward not because the employee's looking for more money, it's because we can't fill that second position. But the problem is, okay, so we can, the hybrid approach, as you call it, and instead of, so we had it, we were at twenty-five thousand, let's say. So if we go to forty-five thousand each, each part-time driver, but then that becomes a union deal, that could open up another can of worms. Is it, because I, I think that's what I heard a little while ago, right? Because.
I think we're mixing union issues. I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Not a union issue. It's been, it's been two part-time roles, union roles, so that, like, nothing's changing. We're simply saying we'll increase the amount for the individual.
So we increase the amount, you guys try and fill it with two part-timers with the increased amount and see if that works.
Right, correct.
Otherwise.
Hybrid approach.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to go to the hybrid approach at the, at the higher rate of ninety, ninety thousand, six ninety-one.
Second that.
For both, you're talking.
For both, yeah, the hybrid.
Would that still keep us in, uh, surplus budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I didn't exceed the amount.
Oh, um, Alderman Smoski, go ahead.
Jeff, right. You're telling me that they, they won't drive it all those, all those runs by themselves? Or they're gonna be enough bucket, not work for the other people? And then, then essence doesn't.
No, they're part-time.
What?
They're part.
You get the part-time drivers, but doesn't that lower their hours? I mean, they're making hourly pay, correct? Not a, not a salary.
So.
Right. Doesn't it drop their?
Okay.
Pay down a little more?
Go ahead.
Okay, so how it's gonna work is, what they used to do was three days one week, two days the following week. So they're each doing that, but now for those five days in those two weeks, the hybrid approach is basically paying more money without the, all the other benefits. If they can find that person. So you're trying to entice more people or a bigger pool.
We have a motion in second.
Okay. Alderman, go ahead, go ahead.
What, what would be the timeframe for this hybrid approach? Before they couldn't find an extra driver and revert to the, uh, single driver? I mean, they, I think they have given a plan. They've looked at this. Alan said, this is the best we can do, and we have a backup. So if the driver's gone, we have, we can bring somebody in from public works and cover it. Anytime you have a small department, even if you have two drivers and one's gone, how are you gonna fill out that extra time? You still have to find somebody to do it, so.
Damn you. No idea. But I'm.
Go ahead, Alderman Sinema.
But that, that backup is not somebody sitting on the. But that, that backup is not somebody sitting on the bench waiting to drive the bus. That's a skilled laborer making much, 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 much more than that, and we're taking that person out of the field. Is that what your concern was earlier?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
I would also note that the backup is, their job is not the dial-a-ride driver. Obviously, they're a backup, so they do not usually provide the utopian touch of the normal.
Again, not my words, but I like them.
Driving it like a dump truck, right? Can't imagine that ride.
Director Lang?
I was just gonna comment on Alderman Messina's, uh, question that yes, um, there's no one just standing by waiting to be called to be the dial-a-ride driver. Uh, historically, we've had a number of union, uh, members that have volunteered to be backup, have gone through the, the, whatever training they have to do through PACE, uh, to be certified, and it hasn't been an issue in, in my time here, um, pulling somebody off of a job to, to cover the backup, uh, dial-a-ride driver position.
But they make significantly more, correct or incorrect, than the figure shared?
I mean, it depends on the position. Um, currently, we have a maintenance two that is our primary backup driver to the dial-a-ride, so it's, you know, a moderate change in scale, yes.
Increase scale.
Correct. Go ahead.
So the, now, say we take a operator, somebody that's doing a backhoe and, you know, I mean, they have to do this position for three weeks. The union doesn't have an issue with that, taking that person and putting them in a dial-a-ride bus for three weeks?
Still getting paid their salary.
Director Lang?
Correct. Has been an issue. They're still getting paid their, their regular salary to, uh, meet the needs of the city.
But, but there, we're short an operator that's needed in another role that...
We don't currently have any HEOs that are backup dial-a-ride drivers, so that particularly hasn't been an issue, but, um, it hasn't been an issue where the dial-a-ride driver has been out long-term for us. So that's not to say it can never happen, but there is a backup in place. It's maybe a less-than-perfect system, but, uh, yeah, the, the real issue was being able to fill that second part-time role. And from the feedback that we've gotten, I won't speak to the current dial-a-ride drivers wants or needs, but from the feedback that we've gotten from applicants, it's because they're seeking, um, full-time employment.
Okay.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on that then, on the hybrid, uh, option.
Alderman Abez?
We're voting if we want the hybrid option as a backup. Is, I just want to be clear on what we're vote, what we're voting on.
No, we're, we're disregarding the green sheet here. Instead of the green sheet here, we're going to proceed with still doing two part-time drivers like we current, we currently do, just raising the scale to forty-five thousand each part-time driver. That's the hybrid approach.
Yes.
Alderman Catalana?
Yes.
Alderman Curiality?
So that's the hybrid, or two drivers instead of one, as in the current green sheet. Is that correct?
My votes, no.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmoski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Okay, continue, uh, Director Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, any other questions on tourism?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, moving on narcotics forfeiture, uh, the only thing of, uh, any significance, maybe a little bit of excitement, uh, is this year's budget, uh, for the narcotics forfeiture does include the purchase and training of a new K nine unit. You may recall, a few council meetings ago, we had the retirement for K nine Bane. So included in this budget is the cost associated with procuring and training a new K nine unit for the police department. And then in the capital, there is some just equipment for, uh, for the, for the unit. Thank you. Uh, we're going to, uh, the TIF District One. Again, as you know, um, this is largely project-based, um, so moving forward to contractual services, that amount right now is, is a little bit unknown, but, you know, we anticipate that there'll be some projects, some studies, uh, perhaps someone coming in asking for a TIF agreement. So we do put some money aside each year, uh, for those types of things. So that's what's reflective there. Uh, the capital outlay, the nine-hundred thousand, uh, Public Works has identified with the new user coming in in Industrial Park, the cleaners. They've identified that that lift station was in need of some work, uh, so that's what that nine-hundred thousand dollars is reflective of, is doing the work on that, uh, I believe it's the cluster lift station up there. And then the principal and interest payments are for the Public Works building. The interfund transfer is just to transfer the bond proceeds out of the TIF fund into the Capital Projects Fund to pay for the Public Works building. So that's why there's a significant decrease, uh, in that number for this year. Uh, TIF Two, um, as you're aware, we are sitting in TIF Two right now. Uh, TIF Two, largely the, uh, the expenditures for this, uh, will largely kick off, uh, once the, uh, property next door has been developed and that TIF incentive, um, starts to come to fruition. Uh, TIF District Three is the new one, uh, called Route Eighty-three North, so it's the area directly south of the Nippon Building and then north of where, uh, the rest of the incorporated area is. Uh, this TIF was started about a year ago. We haven't received, uh, the first round of property tax money that will come in June. Uh, we did throw the ten thousand dollars in there just in case there's any, um, any RDAs or anything we need legal to look at in the meantime. But at this time, there's no specifically, uh, anticipated programs out there. But again, we did want to throw a little bit of money in there in case we needed to, um, incur some legal bills or some type of development, um, engagement. Uh, moving on to the Capital Projects Fund, uh, this is what was discussed back in January at the CIP meeting. Um, the budget, uh, as presented, uh, so this is the high level of capital projects, so it's Capital Project Land Act. Uh, moving on to Capital Projects itself, um, again, this is what was discussed back on January twelfth. Uh, these numbers are inclusive of the decisions and any changes that were made that evening, and so that's what's presented here, is the CIP approved as amended that night. Uh, moving on to land acquisition, there's no anticipated costs in land acquisition this year. Uh, you will see revenue of about one-point-one million. Um, I'm sorry, about page ninety-six is land acquisition. Page ninety-six in the budget. That's in X. Keeping everybody on, on schedule, you know. Yeah, um, you will see, um, on page ninety-seven, there's approximately one-point-one million in revenue coming in. That's the reimbursement for the, uh, flood buyout properties that the city purchased, uh, earlier this year. Um, I believe it was last week, uh, the demo contracts for those properties was on the agenda, so they'll be coming down soon.
How many did we buy? How many properties did we...
Three.
Okay.
Yeah, and then at, at that time, once the properties have been demolished, then Mr. Hastings can submit for reimbursement from some combination of FEMA, IEMA, and IDNR.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, and we recovered that one-point-one million from FEMA. Are we able to use those monies for something else, IMA acquisition on certain park roads, you know, getting back to those?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, that would just be replenishing the fund for buying them in the first place, so we would just be made whole on a reimbursement pa- basis, yeah.
Continue, go ahead.
Uh, next we're to the enterprise funds, now the business-type funds. We have the commuter parking lot, sanitation, and then the water and sewer fund. Uh, going to the parking lot fund, uh, not a lot of changes in expenses here in the commuter parking lot fund. Uh, revenues, uh, for this have continued to lag, however. Um, some of the daily parking revenues have come back fairly well, uh, but the quarterly passes are, are only a fraction of what they were pre-pandemic. Um, so the fund is still not generating nearly the revenue it was pre-pandemic. Uh, so this is a pretty bare-bones budget, um, for the commuter parking lot until such time that the revenues start to come back that we can look to do a little bit more with the fund. But right now, it's a pretty status quo, bare-bones budget for the commuter parking. Uh, sanitation fund, uh, this is the fund where we bill people for garbage and then we pay the garbage bill. Um, so it's pretty much just money in, money out. Um, there is a transfer to the general fund for, uh, administration, but again, it's just money in, money out. There's, aside from the, uh, Wooddale for a Greener Tomorrow Committee, um, the funding for that does come out of the sanitation fund, like for the Green Fair.
Mm-hmm.
That's really the only special project, uh, per se, that comes out of the sanitation fund on an annual basis.
And how much was that amount again?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yeah, about eight thousand, yeah.
And that, and that's the, um, and the company pays that, the garbage company, disposed company, correct?
So the eight thousand, the last couple of years, has been our share of those programs after a couple of different, uh, donations. We've gotten some money for the county the last couple of years, and one of the local banks has donated some money, but that's been our remaining share. So we found that, um, this program, uh, communities have done away with like the free electronics and whatever. People are holding on to that, and then when they find a free program, they, then they'll show up at the same time, so.
Alderman Jacob?
What, well, it, it says credit card processing fees. We budgeted three thousand. Wh- why, and what were we using a credit card for in this fund?
Yeah, so that's, um, again, the fees when people pay their bill. Uh, so just the way the fees are processed on, on Munis, all of those credit card fees go into the water fund now. Before, they were getting allocated out between the two funds, because on the water bill, on the utility bill, there's your water bill, water sewer bill, and then the garbage portion. So on Springbrook, it was allocating it out, but since we've gone to, to Tyler Munis, it hasn't been allocated, so all of that's just going to the water fund.
Okay.
Moving on to the water fund, uh, summary here, um, generally speaking, the increase in charges for services is related to the new users, specifically, uh, RKC, the cleaner in the industrial park. And then again, there is a little bit, uh, as I mentioned, of organic increase, just anticipating, uh, rate increase from the DuPage Water Commission by way of the city of Chicago. Um, on that, the, the revenues are, are, are pretty steady. Um, the in- interfund transfer, you may recall from the CIP, is to help do some exploratory work and exploratory design work on the potential of a new water tower, um, that, uh, Mr. Lang and his team will be working on.
Okay. Moving right along. Question? Mayor, go ahead.
So you said the interfund transfers from TIF One for the, the, uh, that's for the money we're gonna get from, we're gonna try and use TIF money for that water tower?
Go ahead.
That is something we are, uh, deeply exploring. Um, so part of it, and we're gonna get into a technical discussion tonight, but the way the systems are balanced with the, um, excess usage that's gonna be created by the cleaners up there and potentially some other developments is gonna put additional strain on that system that exists within the TIF. That's not gonna be able to provide as much system pressure to the rest of the town. And so therefore, there is some nexus saying that the activities related to the TIF are creating the need for the water tower elsewhere in the city, so you need nexus in causation, and that, that, in our opinion, uh, satisfies both of those, uh, both of those needs and rules.
Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, and then, uh, so in the non-operating revenues, we've got video gaming there, and we put it there. It's supposed to be temporary. It seems to be, have become permanent. It was only a hundred thousand back then. Now we're at two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. I mean, once this new user comes online, you'll be able to give us some kind of worksheet on how we're, how that's working, because at some point...
Manager Murmus, go ahead.
We're still planning on doing, uh, water workshop as well.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Some time later this year.
Right.
So that's something we can, we can definitely throw in there.
Right, it's, I just want to see how it all, I know we're having a workshop. We got the business coming online. You know, this was supposed to be for economic development and when we started this, but we had to make some decisions, so, okay.
Alderman Woods?
If this was the question, they're gonna more than take care of or offset that number. Should we move that number back to economic development?
Yeah. Go ahead.
That is the expectation, yes.
Well, okay, once we get it all, you're right, operating.
Yep. Moving right along. Alderman Woods, you have another question?
Yeah, um, looking at the hookup and tap-on fees, uh, ten thousand dollars. Is that being conservative, given all the different things going on? I would think that number was much larger for the industrial building and state park than from, uh...
Yeah, we, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. We had anticipated it higher the last couple of years, um, and then unfortunately, for various reasons, those projects didn't come to fruition.
Right.
So we took the opposite approach this year with the water fund and said, okay, let's be a little more conservative, and then if they come, then we'll be happy to, to put a higher number there.
Because they kinda got pushed in, well, started to boom this, this spring. If I can, uh, follow up, there were a couple of their...
Go ahead.
Um... Discharge, uh, permits, that's from the, the industrial park, those are fees that they pay.
Go ahead.
Uh, correct, yeah, that's, uh, the industrial pretreatment. There's a number of users that pay, uh, a fee on a monthly basis to be in that program.
And then, uh, just, uh, one last one, the turn-on-off fees, uh, twenty thousand dollars. So we anticipate that that'll go down because, uh, where was that? We were at twenty-nine thousand, so you're thinking that'll reduce by thirty percent?
Yeah, uh, pre, pre-pandemic, we were shutting off thirty to thirty-five, um, homes every other month. Uh, the first one we did out of the pandemic was a hundred-and-sixteen, then ninety, then seventy, and we're now back down into the forties. So that twenty-nine thousand was, yeah, so, so it's trending back down to kind of where we were before, hopefully. Hopefully.
Continue.
Yeah, here's just a high-level summary of the three, uh, divisions within the water fund. We'll get into each individual one, but just a high-level review of each one. Uh, the capital, again, was what we discussed at the CIP meeting, and is, is, you know, one-point-two without one-point-seven. Uh, so getting into utilities, uh, the largest increase there being commodities. Um, and pretty much that entire increase in commodities is the sale of water. So actually, the number for the DuPage Water Commission, uh, purchase of water, uh, actually went up, I believe, by four-hundred thousand. So there were a couple of items in there that actually came down a little bit, but we did increase that by, sorry, it's three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollar increase for the purchase of water. So literally, the entire commodities increase was due to the purchase of water due to RKC and then a little price increase.
Alderman Messina?
Make sure that we speak to the correct, I know, Mayor, we get us this often. So we're saying here that water increase was three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars? Sorry.
The water increase was three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand year-over-year? Yeah, so we're anticipating the increase in our cost of water purchase to increase by three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars this year.
Yeah, that's what you're projecting, which is a seventeen percent increase. Now is that, not as we figured out, not because of the amount of usage. Usage has actually gone down. It's the cost of the water delivery from, to purchase that's gone up.
Yeah, so we still haven't gotten the increase from DuPage Water Commission by way of the city of Chicago. Um, we think the city of Chicago's probably waiting another two weeks for some reason to release that number. I don't know what's going on in Chicago. Um, but, uh...
They're being more than just getting over the real estate tax.
Yeah. Um, but, but the preponderance of that increase...
The election.
Um, is what we're anticipating, um, RKC to use in water, based upon their estimated water usage. So that's what we're anticipating, that, that increase in three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand is largely based upon, uh, RKC and their increased usage. So that's what we're anticipating, that, that increase in three hundred and ninety thousand is largely based upon RKC and their increased usage.
Outcoming.
So which, which does have the correlating increase in revenue, a couple of pages earlier in the budget document.
Mayor.
So, so the alleged increase probably after April fifth from the city of Chicago, that's, that's gonna be their increase, not DuPage Water Commission, is it, or DuPage Water? I mean, they increased the Water Commission, then the Water Commission increases to us, whatever, they pass it through. There's no extra increase from the Water Commission coming, right, that I haven't heard of anything.
Yeah, when I spoke to their finance director, they had indicated that they were not anticipating adding anything for themselves at this time.
And the new contract between Page Water Commission and, and Chicago is twenty, end of twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five, correct?
That sounds correct, yeah.
That's when they're gonna, but again, that's, okay.
Continue.
Again, there's just some, a couple of notes on there, again, largely due to the water increase. The wastewater division, which the, the treatment plants contractual minor adjustments are the largest, being in dump fees for the wastewater division. Again, when we get in the budget book, you'll see the debt service, you'll see the principal payments going up a little bit, interest payments going down. It, you know, those act like a teeter totter, so they come out to roughly the same number every year. But as you know, just like at home with your mortgage or whatever, as you pay down more of the principal, there's less interest, you're paying more towards principal. And then again, just a little bit of increased decrease in the general fund transfer, offset by this surf transfer. And that's on page one thirteen of the budget book, is the wastewater.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Capital division, again, this was what we discussed on January twelfth, so the numbers included in this budget are reflective of those conversations that night. Kind of the largest added thing in there was the Addison Road Water Main and I and I, the continued I and I program specifically over in Ward Four. Those were the two largest expenses in this particular budget for this year.
Okay, continue.
Interfund, internal service funds, we have the surf funds. Again, just based upon the funding formula and the schedule, we did, we were able to drop the capital this year based upon what we expect to purchase. Mr. Lang and his team have done a really good job of trying to get vehicles when we can. So part of this program, you know, the pre-funding of the vehicles has allowed us to take advantage of some opportunities. For example, the Vector, we weren't supposed to purchase until next year. We had a vendor after the demo, I think had one on the lot, which was, I think, the exact one we demoed. So we could either buy it then or wait to order and then wait eighteen months to get it. So we were able to take advantage of that, move it up. Unfortunately, we weren't able to buy a number of, you know, utility trucks, so we pushed those off a year, hopefully to do that. So the flexibility that we've been provided by doing this fund this way over the last number of years has actually been able to help us get some vehicles we might not have otherwise been able to get in this current environment. So it is working the way we intended and has provided some flexibility that we wouldn't have had under the old funding methodology from a number of years ago.
Continue.
Fiduciary funds, police pension, special service area, police pension fund, this is their proposed budget. I have gotten some revised numbers from the police pension fund since the time that this got sent out. So those will change in the final draft, but that's not gonna change anything to do with the general fund. And since this is a fiduciary fund, these are assets, you know, technically of the pension fund, so they don't have any specific impact on the city's financial position. Lastly, the special service area, again, debt service for special service areas twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. I will have to double check my schedule, but I think this might be the last year and then these bonds will be paid off. If not, there's gonna be a very small portion next year. You may recall a number of years ago, when we refinanced these, we were able to buy down a year and a half of debt service to get these paid off sooner. So we will get these paid off a couple of years sooner than we had anticipated originally relieving the businesses in these tax, SSAs of that additional tax burden, so.
Okay, that's it?
Thank you.
And, and for the residents, the city of Wooddale, what is the amount of the surplus budget that we have?
Yeah.
Yeah. A- as presented, the general fund had a surplus of ninety-three thousand and five dollars.
Okay.
So the, the one change in the tourism fund did not have an impact on that number.
Okay.
But we would need a motion to recommend this forward to the city council as amended.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to, for the budget as amended and. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, before we move forward with that, I'd like to have a little more conversation on adding the assistant city manager. At least to the budget, we can work out the kinks in, in, in that, how it, how it happens, how it unfolds, but we keep talking about it, but it kind of falls by the wayside, so. At least if we put the money in the budget for it, we'll have a more serious conversation of working that out.
Go ahead.
Well, it was a streak of green sheets, but I'd have to red sheet that one.
Okay.
In my opinion.
So?
Anybody else on the. Feel something to add or?
It'll put us in a deficit budget, so.
So.
Go ahead.
I think, I think it warrants having that conversation, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it's gonna get passed, right? I'm respectful of the job, I think he's a rock star, right? I've never seen anybody that doesn't want to give up work. So God bless you for doing that. At the same time, right, like, I, I wanna, I would love to know the why, right? So if we have that conversation, if he can continue to do that without burnout, that's great. I mean, I, I think this, I just, I just need to understand more and if it's in the budget, at least we can have a serious conversation is like a, throughout the word feasible, like, why? Like, what's the value of having it and what's the drawback? And if, and if there's personal drawbacks that he doesn't like, like, we should hear it, right? I'm respectful of whatever. I mean, he still kicks behind, you know, as a city manager, it's just, thinking about protect, as I think about protecting the future, right? If he gets hit by a truck tomorrow, I know he may never leave, but. What?
Here to get with the truck.
Yeah, yeah, yes, Mike's truck. That, that we're just prepared, right? So it's just a matter of, I'm open to having that conversation. I don't know how I feel about it, I just really, I honestly'd be very sensitive to like how he feels about it. But I, I, I would support at least it being in the budget, so it could at least be brought up and we can have a conversation, because yeah, everyone's, people complained about it here or there. I don't know if it warrants that kind of money or Jeff feels he needs it, but.
Go ahead.
You guys can do what you want, I'll leave it at this. If I am a rock star and I'm telling you it's a red sheet and I think it's a complete waste of money and somebody's gonna be sitting around doing nothing, if you guys wanna go for it, go for it. I'll support it and of course, I'll find work and we'll make it happen, but again, I will continue to red sheet it.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So again, I'll speak to structure, two things. Succession plan, number one goal of the chief operating officer, we don't have one.
We do.
Number two, we, we don't have a valid one. Number two, we sit up here and we add layers of stuff. The first thing I did when I got onto council was to add layers to the police department, which were much needed. Before, we had a chief, one deputy, we added the second deputy, we added sergeants, because we know we need that. Ego to public works, we've added assistants, we brought on Mr. Gurelli, great, now we're adding a, a management analyst. Everything's growing, but yet the administrative part doesn't wanna grow. I, I'm just confused of why that is. Why not every other case and every other argument, we need more people?
Go ahead.
Since I've been here, we've grown the administrative staff, at least three employees, maybe four, on specialized positions. We've got a full-time special events marketing manager, we have two IT people now, and we have a management analyst. So it has grown, position that you're referring to, we do not have, but we have positions that do many of those duties.
Alderman, I'm sorry, go ahead, continue. Hold on, Jacob.
I, I just, would just.
I mean, I've been, to be honest with you, I've been kinda advocating this, for this for a long time and Jeff, you do a great job, but I think your talents, as we grow, could be used in better places where you could have somebody, assistant, that could do some of the media, some of the things you shouldn't have to be doing and let you focus on the big picture and the big items that are coming to town and, I, I mean, that's just kinda how I feel about it. Again, you're doing a great job, but there are things I don't think you should have to do, like when you had to act as public works director temporarily. We shouldn't have had, you know, we, we shouldn't have had to do that, you should have been able to put that onto somebody and still been full-time city manager. You know, I mean, even in the community development role, you kinda took on that role for a while. Again, that would have been something you could have given to somebody else and you could have focused on the big picture. I mean, that's a reason I, reason I would be for it, so.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman, Messina.
And again, I, it's kinda like, people say, well, why do you stay, you know, I work for a major company, I could go to a small company and be a CEO tomorrow, probably not. But in my mind, if I want, i- if it's a, I wanna understand from Jeff, if it's a, we're a small city, but I really love my span of control. Like, I can move to a small company and run the entire company of a hundred, we're considered a smaller city, right? If that's the case, great, then we take that feedback, I just, I don't know, before we go as a council, I'd love to hear that. Or, you know, go to a big, if he was to go to a big city where he'd be, you know, your, your, your span of power, if that's what drives you and why you love being here, because hey, we're a small city and I really can make a bigger influence, then if I worked for a major city like a Rockford or a Downers Grove, you would have those multiple layers and your influence would not be as heavy. That's what I don't know, I've never been able to pull that from, I, I personally would love not to have that much responsibility. In fact, it's, for me, that was a driver for not, for moving out of that role, as Alderman Jacob knows, and, and not doing that, so. Maybe it's a side conversation we have, I, I don't know, but to me, I would go bananas in your role.
Mayor, go ahead.
So, number one, I wouldn't be as generous as Alderman Woods.
I'm a nice guy.
I know. I know, that's why I love you, but if we put that in right now, you're gonna make this a negative budget. I'm not a big fan of negative budgets.
We can change those numbers down in the back.
No, no, hold on. If you guys wanna have this real discussion, put it in at seventy-five thousand total and we'll have that discussion, which I anticipate is gonna be agonizing. But I'd like to hear both sides and we go from there. Because then at seventy-five thousand, you're on, still passing a positive budget, but you're, we're not gonna settle it tonight and it's not, it's not gonna happen.
Hold on, Woods.
Again, we've, we've done these things before, we've magically, through our magic number guy, have gotten through this. To put in a number that, so what the number you would need to actually hire somebody? We, we, we just passed ninety thousand dollars for a minivan bus driver. And we're gonna put in seventy-five thousand for its city manager, if that's the case, we're never gonna hire one.
Well, that's two people.
So Jeff's automatically gonna win this debate.
No, that was two people.
I, I'm trying to put in a realistic number and have a realistic conversation. We sat through cycles of all the things we went through and this has nothing to do with whether Jeff did a good job or didn't do a good job. We have structural issues, I mean, when we've lost people in the building department, right, and somebody on the police department is on vacation, magically, I mean, we have a lot of holes, you know, it's a baseball team with four people missing on the field. That's a lot to overcome and so can you do it a day here, a day there, a week here or there? It's not how you should function. I'm charged with making sure the place functions, so I'm okay with having the disagreement. And this has nothing to do with whether Jeff does a good job or doesn't do a good job. I think we need that person there. Now, you could call him something different if you want, we've had this debate before, but there's things that need to be done and I just wanna have the conversation.
Mayor.
Again, we can have that conversation and if we choose to go forward, then something's, something will have to give. If you're gonna give ninety or ninety-five thousand or a hundred and five thousand, you're gonna have to figure that out at that point. But to pass a negative budget, I just, I don't.
Hold on, Jacob.
Again, we've, I mean, we have numbers in there that are more than adequate to cover things. I mean, if we lower some of those numbers, it's happened before, I mean, it, it, you could make it work, I mean, Brad, I mean, has done it before. But, well, well, but we're.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
I, I was gonna say, so we don't make this go all night, because we can, the mayor and I can debate.
Correct.
No, everybody can debate.
I, I mean, one final thing I just have to say.
Sorry, we have the page holder in there, we have the conversation.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Let's have a vote on the budget. We already have the motion in the second round. I made the motion.
We made the motion, I read my, and you love it.
Question is, do you wanna add as a placeholder, whatever, seventy-five or eighty thousand, and instead of being ninety thousand surplus, now you have like thirteen thousand surplus. And then the discussions will happen sometime in the near future.
Hold the woman names.
I guess I just don't see why we can't have a discussion without putting a number in the budget, because I don't wanna be pressured into making a decision without hearing both sides of justification of why we need it or why we don't. And to put an arbitrary number in the budget to potentially make it go negative, that, that seems like rushing into something. I know this issue's come up before from what you've said, but to pressure into making a decision without really having any facts and hearing both sides, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Mayor, did you have a?
The only reason to give it a number is to put it in the budget and have the discussion. So if we don't put it in the budget, I know we're gonna hear, well, it's not in the budget and.
Unfunded.
It'll be unfunded and we're not gonna do that. But it seems like, seems like four already wanna have the discussion, so we should have the discussion. And, and then after we hear all the facts, there'll be a vote, right? So you put it in there at whatever, eighty thousand, it's not to say we might vote against it. Or if you're gonna put more money to it, you're gonna give up something, somewhere else you're gonna reduce and those discussions will be had. But if it's not in the budget, we'll hear, well, it's not in the budget, so it sounds like we wanna go forward.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that everything in this budget are placeholders. Everything else gets voted on again, every light item in this budget will get voted on again, so it's not, there's no pressure to say yes to this. It's just, all you're saying is, we're gonna have the conversation. It doesn't commit to spending the money, no more than anything else.
He's the Guinness World Book, you have the Guinness World Record of the fastest budget passed, probably.
Alderman Jacob, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
And to that point, Nadine, we're all, I mean, just looking at the budget, I mean, I mean, I see a line item here. We have it for twenty-three thousand, we've never spent over twenty thousand, so there's three thousand, I mean, you could go through that book, so these are all estimates. I mean, none of these are exact figures, so you could easily go through here and find probably fifty thousand dollars of numbers that might be overstated.
Right, but those are estimates of things that have been bought or purchased before. This is a new position completely that hasn't had a history of being spent over the years. So, I mean, I understand the, the point about putting a placeholder, but to, I guess, to talk about it at a later point, it could be voted down.
Yeah.
But. But to put. But to put a dollar figure on it and potentially not have a balanced budget, to just throw an arbitrary number.
So, so can we have a roll call on the budget?
The budget will be down.
Well, what'll happen is like, road projects are gonna come in under, they're gonna come in overall, that stuff gets adjusted, like you were just saying, like, those are all just placeholders. That seventy-five K is very arbitrary, we could say we're gonna do a road for two hundred thousand, if, you know, resurface it, it could come in at a hundred and fifty, or, or two fifty, right? All that stuff is just there, and I guess what, I'm not defending his point, but Alderman Woods is saying is like, you just, it need, it could be one dollar, that, it has to have a dollar figure attached to it to be part of this, cause there's stuff in here we voted down, right? Like, we don't want X, right, and that, it's a red-sheet that Jeff was calling it, right?
Mayor, did you have a question?
Let him finish.
Oh, it's, it's a red-sheet, so we don't vote on it, so it's just a matter of, we could put in for one dollar.
Right, so it sounds like you want the discussion. If you're gonna put in a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, then you're gonna vote on a negative budget. Me personally, not gonna do it.
All right, we already covered that, so we're gonna get seventy to have the conversation.
So. And, and that's what I said, so. So, Tony, you made the motion, do you agree to this seventy-five or eighty thousand?
No, I don't.
Okay, then we'll have to have a motion, do we have a second on the motion? Uh, we don't have a second, okay, do we have another motion?
I'll make the motion to include seventy thousand for the.
I would second that.
Okay, now I need a roll call.
And just to be clear before we vote, I mean, we'll still be in a positive, we, we will not be passing a negative budget.
Yes. No.
And to be clear, it's simply to have the conversations for both sides, to understand why we don't need it and why the benefits of.
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Hurielli?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay. And Woods?
Uh, items to consider?
I'm sorry?
Items that could be.
Right. If I can find my sheet.
There it's somewhere. There you go.
All right. Okay, so items to consider are future meetings, um, fiscal year ended in, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, the audit report coming up in March, any other, um, items to consider, future meetings, if there are none, then make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now you can go to the bathroom.